First, I'd like. Good evening, everyone. It's March 1st. This is a meeting of the Barrington Town Council, and I'm calling it to order at 7:01 PM. All members of the Barrington Town Council are present. First, I'd like to ask that we rise for our pledge of allegiance, and Jim Cunha will put on the screen the flag, the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jim. And now for our next order, we'll go through some announcements, and Jim Cunha will take us through those announcements, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, our COVID rapid testing site in the Barrington Plaza remains open Tuesday through Saturday from 9 to 5. I visited there this past Saturday, and they had a pretty good crowd. So we're still getting quite a few people tested. They recommend you get tested once a week. Takes 15 minutes, so we encourage all our residents to do that. We are also continue to take registration for the COVID vaccine at our senior center. Anyone in town can register and go in that database, and if vaccines become available to us as a municipality, then we will certainly continue on down the list as the ages get younger and younger. For the state, 65 and over can register at the state site. I have a link on the agenda to that site. It's www.vaccinevaccinateri.org, and there's also a phone number where you can call to get an appointment. The Committee on Appropriations will begin their budget review tomorrow evening. They'll be reviewing the schools' budget, and a week from tomorrow, on March 9th, they'll be reviewing the municipal budget. Tomorrow is the special state election on bonds for this year. Voting will take place at Town Hall in the council chamber from 7:00 in the morning until 8:00 PM in the evening. I've decided to put into the announcements our running total on tree planting and removal. This month, we have for the 2020 calendar year, we planted 109 trees and we removed 75. And I'd like to just talk about revaluation. Revaluations will be going out. The reevaluation notifications will be going out on Wednesday, March 3rd. The call center for the Northeast revaluation will take place between March 4th and 22nd. The phone number will be on the notification. The process for review is pretty straightforward, the appeal process. The informal review for Northeast revaluation will take place from March 8th to March 31st, and that's a correction on the agenda. That's for people that have the data is incorrect, and they want to correct the data that led to their assessment. Then, from then, you appeal to the tax assessor, and then to the town's Board of Assessment Review, and finally, the option of appealing to Superior Court if necessary. Also, as an attachment on tonight's agenda, is the power grid statistics from National Grid as far as outages go, and I think Counsel Costello has some comments on that.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. In response to our questioning, National Grid has produced regulatory standards that we were looking for to get a sense for how often we are out of power. There's always a feeling around town that we tend to lose power. They have produced the SAFE and SADI regulatory standards. That would be the System Average Interruption Frequency Index, which would be how many times your customer is interrupted, and also the SADI, which is the System Average Interruption Duration Index, which is how many minutes per year we're actually out. And they did provide some comparative data with five other towns over the last five years. And so it's a starting point. It doesn't tell us where we have specific problems. It doesn't tell us how quickly they respond when you're typically out, but it is a starting point for people who are interested, and I believe the town manager has placed it on the town website under announcements for people who are interested in getting some data on that issue.
Thank you, Counsel Costello, and thank you, Jim. Before we go on to the next agenda item, I think Counsel Breyer has his hand raised, and I'm not sure if that's on purpose. It looks like it.
Yes, yes, it was on purpose. Wonder if Manager Cunha can let us know with the revaluations, if, when we get those letters in the mail, are we able to go online and see what our neighborhood changed? Like, when does the website get updated?
Northeast Revale should have their website updated by the 3rd, and Ken Millet's on the phone if they're on the call. If that's incorrect, Ken, please let us know.
Thank you.
Jim, that is correct. The website will be updated prior to the notices being mailed, so when you have the notice in hand, you'll be able to look and check out your neighborhood and make your appeal accordingly. Thank you. On that point, one of the things that we've, I'll tell you, as my daughter is looking for a house in town, and one of the things we see is that the prices are through the If there is a substantial increase in property values, that, you know, you're going to see that, you may see that in your assessment. What does that mean? It's hard to tell. If you put a new addition on your house and you dramatically increase the value of it, you expect your property value, your property taxes to go up. But if you haven't done anything to your house, and yet the value has gone up, that doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to see a corresponding increase in taxes, because the way that we do our taxes is everybody has a share of the taxes based on the value of their houses. If everybody's house goes up the exact same amount, the same percentage, let's say all of our houses went up 5%, then all of our shares would stay exactly the same. So don't immediately assume if your property values went up, it means that your taxes are going to jump up in a corresponding amount. The taxes are going to be based on the budget and the overall share that everyone will have. So that's a little confusing, but I hope that people don't assume immediately that their taxes are going to go through the roof because their property values went up. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is Item 4, which is an update on the status of the COVID-19 vaccine registration and vaccinations. I've asked Jim Cunha to take us through this. We're in a, obviously, you know, nobody has experience with pandemics until now. We're in a position where we're being called on to, I think as Jim says, improvise, adapt, overcome, try to come up with ways of dealing with these things. We have a plan in place that would help us vaccinate everyone in the town if we had enough vaccines to do so. We don't. We're getting vaccines on a weekly basis, and we're able to vaccinate some people. We've set up something for that, and I'd like Jim to kind of take us through that and take us through where we stand. I think we're in good shape in terms of being prepared to vaccinate as long as we get those vaccines. Jim?
Thank you, President Carroll. There are currently three options available for vaccinations. One is the local option, which we talked about earlier. It's being held at the PEC Center for Adult Enrichment every Wednesday. We had 110 doses week one. Week two last Wednesday, we had 160 doses. This week, we're back to 110. And then next week, we'll have what we're projecting as 110 doses. That will be our first round of doses. Then, starting on March 17th and working for the next four weeks through April 7th, we will be administering second doses to those first, to the people that were vaccinated initially. Same time, same date, just one month later, actually 20, exactly 28 days later. We're hoping to get some more doses for week four, but we will see. That's the municipal, the municipal pod, point of distribution. There are also, yes?
You should remind folks about how they can register again. You can register by going to the website right at the top of the Barrington website. There's a way to register. Not everyone has a computer. There's also a phone number, and we'd ask that you share that information with your neighbors who may not have computers so that they can call and they can register using the telephone.
Yes, correct. And that number, local number, is 247-1926. Now, that's the local municipal. We anticipate by the end of this week having all of those appointments for both this week and next week filled, so that will fulfill our municipal pods for the eight-week run, unless we get some additional doses. So if you do not get a call by the end of this week, that means the municipal option is no longer a viable option for you. And if you are over 65, you should then look to the state sites or to the pharmacies. The state sites are the Dunkin' Donuts Center and Sokanosik Crossroads. That's for the 65 and older. And like I said earlier, vaccinateri.org is a website for the registration, and there's also a phone number on that attached. Coming soon, there'll be one or two additional state sites, and then we are opening regional So the regional sites will be, we will be participating, as it stands right now, in the Northeast Region site. It's currently going to involve North Providence, Pawtucket, East Providence, Barrington, Warren, Bristol, and Tiverton. It looks as though that site will be at the old Shores across from East Providence High School, the former Shores across from East Providence High School. They are hoping to open that site on March 15th. We will announce when it's going to open, when we know the exact date. Once again, it's contingent on the number of vaccinations that they get. So the state will greatly expand its capability with vaccinations with regional sites and additional state sites as the municipal sites begin to end. And once again, I'd like to remind you that the pharmacies, CVS, and Walgreens are also available for vaccinations for 65 and older. Are there any questions? All that information is on the town website, and if you can't find it on the town website, call Town Hall, and we'll be glad to provide that information to you.
Thank you, Jim. There is a question from Lynn Rogiri.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Oh, I just wanted to say that Vary is here in the, at the meeting.
Oh, great, great.
Okay. I don't know if you can see her, but she is here.
Great. Thank you. I think that's what they call a teaser in show business for something later in the show. Okay, I didn't see any other questions, so we'll move on. But before we get to the consent agenda, I wanted to, again, provide an opportunity to members of the council to highlight any portion of the consent agenda. As we talked about our last meeting, my purpose is to give the chance to draw special attention to a particular item, so we don't have to remove that item from the consent agenda for discussion. This is just an opportunity to highlight something. If a member of the council doesn't intend to vote in the affirmative on the item, then of course they should remove it from the consent agenda. We get to that point. Also, I've asked that if we have questions or concerns, we should try to get those addressed before the meeting. But of course, these are just suggestions for the council members, and if anyone wants to, they can remove any item from the consent agenda for separate discussion for any reason. So before we get to removing items from the consent agenda, I wanted to offer one thing that I wanted to highlight, and that's a letter to our Department of Public Works from Mr. Charlie Bruhl, who used to be the Chief of Police in town. He wanted to pass along his appreciation for good work and efficient work by the DPW, and I would ask that Director Corby pass that along to his team and let them know that we appreciate what they're doing and how hard they're working. Now, does anyone else from the council have anything they'd like to highlight from the upcoming consent agenda? Yes, Jacob?
I have a question that's not going to change how I vote, but I just wanted to ask it at the meeting so everybody hears the answer. Should I do that now, or should I pull the item and ask?
I'm going to ask that.
Okay. So it's on the finance report, and I noticed that the surplus year-to-date is about $4.7 million, and at this time last year was $2.4 million. And so going by where we are in the annual cycle, now it looks like there could be, could be on track for a surplus of as much as $7 million, which would be about 10% of the budget. I expect that there are some large expenses that'll come later in the year, but I just wondered how we're tracking in terms of, now that we're just beyond halfway through the year, how we're tracking for what we expect the end-year budget to look like.
Kathy Repose, if you want to try and answer that, address that?
I was looking for Kathy.
I don't think Kathy's on right now. So we typically underestimate revenue slightly because we don't want to fall short and run into a budget problem. This year, there's a number of reasons, and a lot of it has to do with COVID, that we have some surpluses, a lot of permits have been taken out, a lot of real estate taxes from homes that are being sold at a much higher value. That's my assessment. I think, I'm sure Kathy could give us much more detail. As you know, any surplus at the end of the year goes into the general fund, and we're trying to get to 25%, and we're not there yet, but any significant surplus this year would certainly be of great benefit in getting there.
Okay, so now we're at the point of our meeting where we'll discuss and act on the consent agenda. These are items that are considered routine by the town council and are typically enacted by one motion. There won't be a separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, and the request is for good cause, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Now, is there anything on the consent agenda any members of the council would like to remove for separate discussion? Yes, Jacob?
Item 6, reappointments.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone of our attendees who has an item on the agenda they'd like to, not for separate, on the consent agenda for separate discussion? Okay, I don't see any hands. So do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of Item 6 as presented?
So moved?
Motion made by Vice President Humm and seconded by Counsel Costello. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Counsel Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So Item 6 is approve reappointments. This is for Martha Wallach to be reappointed as a full member on the Board of Canvassers. Is this an item that you wanted to abstain on, Counsel Breyer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to approve reappointments of the boards and commissions as presented?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice President Humm. Is it seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counsel Costello. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Abstained.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Counsel Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries 4 to 0 to 1, with one abstention, that one being an abstention. Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on interviews and appointments, and we have one, and that is for a vacancy on our Housing Board of Trustees for the third alternate with a term ending date of 1/31/24. Is Mr. Thomas Peck here? Yes, there he is. Can we? Well, we're unmuting you, Mr. Peck. Thank you for coming, and if you could tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to the Housing Board.
Sure. I grew up in town, recently returned to town. I have a background in real estate investment, real estate development, and, you know, over the last several years, there's been some opportunities for me to lend those skillsets to some, you know, volunteer-type organizations. I've felt a lot of intrinsic satisfaction in doing so, and I think I could also add those skillsets to the Housing Board of Trustees. One of the most shocking things I've seen in returning to town is just how the affordability component has, that disparity has just continued to grow over the last, call it, 15 years since I haven't been a resident. So anything I can do to help and contribute from a volunteer capacity, I'm looking forward to do so.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Peck. Does anyone have any questions for Thomas Peck? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Peck, we're about to vote on this. I wanted to just thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Thomas Peck to the Housing Board of Trustees as a third alternate to fill a term ending January 31st, 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made by Counsel Breyer, seconded by Counsel Conley. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Counsel Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. You will be getting a notice about this, and we're grateful for your volunteering for this, this really important board.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to discuss and act on the Ad Hoc Tax Exemption Committee. Last month, we voted to modify the tax exemptions to actually add some additional tax exemptions, and that was based on the work over two, three years of the Tax Exemption Committee. I think it's three years. But in speaking with former Counsel Boyagen, it really looked like they had finished their work. So this is, this is an opportunity to thank them for their work, and to disband this ad hoc committee, because we don't need to have a permanent committee. Does anyone want to be heard on that? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to make a motion to thank the Ad Hoc Tax Committee for its hard work and to dissolve the committee effective immediately. Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Breyer seconds. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Counsel Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries.
President Carroll, if I could interrupt for one second. We skipped over public comment.
Oh, I apologize. This is for public comment, so if anyone wants to be heard, please raise their hand. But let me explain, this is an agenda item for members of the public to speak regarding a topic that is not already on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, please indicate that you'd like to speak by raising your hand, or I will also try to, if you can't figure out how to raise your hand on the, on the screen there, just wave, and we'll try and see that. This is a three-minute statement, and when you're recognized, please state your name and residency for the record. Would anyone from the public like to be heard?
I have one hand raised.
Kenneth Block, Mr. Block, please.
Let me, there he is. Should be unmuted, or he can't unmute himself?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, please.
Good evening. I think this is the appropriate time to discuss this. I wanted to just comment about the upcoming financial town meeting. Is this the appropriate time to talk about that?
Well, we actually do have an agenda item for that. That is Item 17, and if you want to wait and be heard for that, we certainly can.
Sure, sorry I jumped the gun.
No, no. Excuse me, that's okay. Anyone else from the public want to be heard? Okay, seeing none, we will now move on to Item 15. This is to discuss and act on the closure of South Lake Drive, and I would ask Jim Cunha to kind of take us through that.
Thank you, Mr. President. As most of us know, South Lake Drive between Washington Road and North Lake Drive continues to deteriorate and is in some places almost impassable for transit. The cost to rehabilitate the road is estimated at $125,000. Cost to install utility poles and streetlights is unknown, but is likely to be in excess of $90,000. In addition, due to the isolated unlit street, there have been numerous incidents of illegal dumping on a regular basis, underage drinking, and vandalism. People have used the road to access Rhode Island Country Club for both vandalism and theft. The road in its present state presents a safety hazard and potentially, and potential liability to the town. So I am recommending that the road be gated at each end, will allow parking at each end so people can access Soames Woods and the fishing area of Echo Lake, and it will be, obviously, the gates will allow access for joggers, walkers, bicyclists, and fishermen. Barrington Police Department, Barrington Fire Department, and DPW would have access to those gates for emergency purposes, and, but at this point, to expend almost $200,000 to repair a road that doesn't really provide any significant access issues to neighborhoods or to, for shortcuts, letting that road go back to a natural trail and becoming part of the Echo Lake nature area seems to be the most prudent thing to do, both fiscally and for the community.
Does anyone on the council want to be heard on this? Yes, Counsel Costello?
One question. I drove it, and it definitely is unsafe. There's no question about that. As you, as you drive up and down with massive potholes, it's in clear disrepair, it's near the water, and it has to be closed, in my view. The one thing I would say is that I know the Conservation Commission has wanted to be heard on this, and they did express their views to the town manager. Would there be, what, would we be able to throw a question to the Conservation Commission as to a potential compromise solution? It should be closed, and I agree with that. Is there a way to actually possibly maintain that road so it would be safe for walking? Could we do something less expensive to make it into an effective trail? I'm throwing that out there because they have expressed an interest in weighing in on the topic, possibly, rather than just looking at it as a binary choice of open or closed, what could be done with it afterwards? That would be one issue. And then secondly, if we are going to close it, one suggestion I heard was to close it near the end of the Land Trust Trailhead to allow people to have more access for walking and fishing. And Mr. Cunha, you may have been saying that. I don't know the exact, I've driven it, but I don't know the exact location of the gates that you're talking about, so I just wanted to explore those two questions.
Can you answer that, Counsel Costello? The plan would be to put the gates, if you're coming on off Washington Road, probably in 50 or 60 feet out, you know, towards the crest of the hill, to allow parking for the Soames Wood access to the Barrington Land Conservation Trust Soames Woods. And then at the, at the north end, it would be to put the gate south of the turnaround area, which would allow a great deal of parking for fishing or walkers that want to drive to there and then walk. So there'd be, there should be plenty of access for parking, just not access to transit the road.
Okay. Okay, with a car. Are you surprised about leaving it open for walkers?
Leaving it open for anyone on a bike, walker, jogger, fisherman, recreational use.
Okay. And, yes, Vice President Hum?
I apologize. I thought you were finished with your thought. I, I don't want to interrupt if you were about to ask another question, maybe back then.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, so you're not talking about paving those parking areas. You're, you're thinking more like something like we have at Haynes Park, a kind of gravel lot?
Which is currently what they are, but we just maintain them from potholes and they're, they're in pretty good shape at the both ends right now, but we maintain those so that wasn't a liability hazard.
Okay. Thank you. Vice President Hum?
Thank you. And I, I did have a few questions. I think two questions that, to me, weren't clear from the materials. One is, I'm aware, or at least I understand, that there is or was a dispute as to whether the town or the Rhode Island Country Club owns either all or a part of that trail. And I've seen some insinuations through the, the materials that we have that, you know, the road is likely town property, not RICC property. And I think, I think there was another mention or two in there. Has there been a definitive determination as to whose property is that, and is that in dispute at all?
Solicitor's office can answer that?
Yeah, the only way we'd be able to get something definitive is we would have to have a title search performed on the property. A few years back, there were several pieces of property that were on the water that the town was trying to determine ownership, and we hired a preemptive title attorney. His name was John Murphy. Sort of his specialty, some of these more difficult title searches, especially when it comes to public property, public roads. So the only way we're going to definitively know is a title search, and we, we just need to hire Attorney Murphy to do that work for us. If the council desires, I would try to at least get a ballpark figure of what that might cost.
No, thank you. I, excuse me. Andy Teich from your office did take a look at all the old minutes, going back to the 1880s. And it was his opinion to me that it wasn't necessary to get a title search, that it was pretty definitive that it was town property.
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you for that update from my own partner.
No, thank you. And thanks for both those explanations. You know, my follow-up question or comment was going to be, I don't know how necessary that would be if there's no dispute anyway. And is, is there a dispute in between the town and Rhode Island Country Club, or, or is it pretty, it hasn't been acknowledged that it's town property?
It has, by Rhode Island Country Club's manager.
Okay, great, thank you. And then just kind of my last follow-up comment is something to, to what Mr. Costello said. I agree, I think it'd be a good idea for the Conservation Commission to take another look and maybe flesh it out. It looks like their, their comments are a bit dated. And I'm not, I'm not sure that they took a look at it appreciating what, what Mr. Cunha said in terms of having it be walkable and passable for bikers, joggers, et cetera, because they, they seem to focus on it being open or closed, period. And even shutting down access to trails. But I think under the town manager's proposal, we would have it open, you know, with the trails from walking to the parking area, et cetera. So I'd be interested in their kind of updated, updated thoughts on it, kind of understanding what the potential plan would be, which I, again, to me, sounds like a really good one. So that's what I have to say there.
If you would like to open it up for their comments, further comments, I would also recommend Open Space and Parks and Rec can also opinionate themselves on the, on the closure.
Counselor Breyer?
Yeah, I was, I was going to ask something similar if, when, when it was first announced that this would be closed, it seemed like there was some distress in the community about people who wanted it to stay open. I don't know whether that was as a road or simply to be able to access it, whether being able to park at the front and, you know, walk a maintained area suffices or not. But I'd like to know that before voting. And if it was that people want it open as a road, something to consider could be putting the cost of it as a single line at the FTM and letting the community decide whether it's open or closed. If it's as a road, certainly if it's being maintained as a, as a walking path, I don't think that's something that we'd have to go deep in the pocket for, but just wanted to surface that for discussion. But I would like to hear from Conservation and also Open Space if maintaining it as a, a walking path with the parking lots is, is what would suffice them.
So I have a, I have a question. I mean, in some sense, there's no rush. In, in another sense, if it's dangerous, we can, and, and it sounds like from what Carl said it is, I'd like to recommend that the council, that the town manager close it off temporarily, pending, you know, further input from people. And then we can, if, if it turns out we think it's a good idea to, to put some money in there and, and open the road up, we can do that and then, then open it up. But if it's dangerous now, we probably should close it off temporarily, obviously leaving access for people to walk and bike, but just the vehicles. Does that make sense to everybody?
That, that makes a lot of sense. I think it is definitely dangerous with the water on both sides, obstructions, massive potholes, and as we understand, even teenagers driving there at night. I think it should definitely, that is what we should be doing.
I don't actually think we even need a motion for that, because I think that's probably within the manager's, you know, purview, just to close a dangerous road, but but I, I would suggest that we put this out to those committees, Conservation, Parks and Rec, and Open Space to, to provide us with their views on this, and then we can bring it up at the next meeting. I don't think we need a motion for that, do we, Mike?
Actually, given this situation, Mike, my recommendation would be that there be a motion to authorize the manager to temporarily close the road and to seek opinion from Conservation and Open Space. I, I think for safety reasons, it's best for you to be on record at this point.
Okay, so I will make that motion, but I'll add to Conservation, Open Space, Parks and Rec. So I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Costello. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Is there discussion?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, and in fact, I was, I was going to ask a clarifying question. In, in terms of temporary closure, so that it doesn't become indefinite, should we put a parameter until, you know, those committees who we are, are potentially going to refer it out to has gotten back to us with an opinion? Or, you know, or something along those lines, or put some, you know, some sort of, you know, 30 days, 60 days, or something like that, so that it doesn't become an indefinite, you know, temporary barrier and hasn't actually been addressed?
Why don't we put it down for our May meeting, up to and including our May meeting? That'll give them plenty of time to get back to us if they, if they, if they want to on this. Does that make sense?
It's May, so.
Okay.
Conservation has it on their agenda. Yeah, Conservation has it on their agenda eight nights from now, so they'll be, they'll be, they'll be addressing it, I think.
Great. So why don't I start over? I'll, I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to close South Lake Drive for safety reasons and to refer this to the, let me say, to close South Lake Drive for safety reasons up to and including May 3rd, 2021. And to send to the, and to refer to the Parks and Recreation Committee, the Open Space Committee, and the Conservation Commission for an opinion on what to do with South Lake, South Lake Drive going forward.
President Carroll, Richard Staples has his hand up. If you allow more discussion?
Oh, sure. Please, Richard.
Thank you, Jim. I, I was just interested to maybe make the observation that there is quite a bit of parking need at the south end of South Lake Drive, meaning the area that is frequented not only by Barrington residents, but many other Rhode Islanders and even people from out of state due to the, the bird habitat and nature of Soames Woods. And there is quite a bit of activity for people who like to fish along the, the dam area, the spillway area. And I'm a little concerned about where that, that cutoff point is going to be, and would recommend that it at least be past the small parking area, the trailhead for Soames Woods, to make sure that you can get in there, pull, actually pull into that parking area, turn around and go back out. Because there really is not parking on Washington Road, and I don't think the people in the neighborhoods west of Washington Road would appreciate those cars being on those streets. And I think if you could put a sign, if I could suggest, at the entrance to South Lake, saying it's closed beyond the Soames Road, Soames Woods Nature Trailhead, that would be helpful, because we, in fact, our family and my wife and I actually go there birding, and I know that there are people that are interested in using it, at least that far in for that reason.
We see intention for that closure at the south end.
Thank you. I wasn't sure what you meant by 50 or 60 feet. I was having a little trouble sort of.
It's the hill there after the entrance?
Yeah, I think it, yeah, okay. As long, as long as we get past that parking lot, but I do know there are a lot of families that like to fish along that dam, and I'm just trying to make sure that we provide adequate, if you will, kind of off-street, off-Washington Road parking for those visitors. Thank you.
Okay, and TR has his hand up. TR is also on our Parks and Rec, so he'll be looking at this, but if we could open it up for TR, please?
There you go.
TR, you need to unmute yourself now. There you go.
There I am. Tom Remeschitis, One Howard. Hey, when you guys decide to shut that down, where that trail entrance is on the left-hand side, used to be a little parking lot in there when I was a kid. So I think you might have to figure on some type of parking for a turnaround, because you don't have enough room on South Lake Drive to park on one side and turn around and head out. So I think that would be one of the big problems over there right now. And maybe a concern, if we're going to keep it a trail, I don't know if the town is doing the road repairs this year, but they have that machine that reclaims the asphalt and breaks it down and makes it dirt again. Maybe they could make a pass through that and just leave it a dirt trail. If they have extra money or something that they can include in the bid for the road reconstruction, if we're doing it. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, TR. This is actually, we're also, as part of this, going to refer it to Parks and Rec. So, you know, you can raise those specific items again when it comes before your committee.
Right, I think it'll be more towards that trail commission that we, that I'm on also. You know, connection through all the trails through that. So I think that would be a big plus down the road.
Okay. Paul Lucinos, Colonel, please.
No, I just was wondering if there's any consideration. There's already signage there that says it should be closed from dawn to, or dawn, I should say. I think a compromise or something local, which would be maybe just gating it, putting the gates there and gating it during the, the hours of darkness. That way, we're not restricted access to the public. I've know, I've seen people fishing all along that entire stretch of road. Yes, you have a, a low, low car, it is very dangerous, but four-wheel-drive vehicles have no problems getting in and out of there. Just food for thought.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public want to be heard? Seeing no one else. Anyone from the council want to be heard? Yes, Vice President Hum?
Just one brief comment. If, if there is any signage with respect to a closure, I'd, I'd suggest that it say, you know, close to vehi- vehicular traffic, so that there's no confusion. Somebody doesn't roll up on their bike and say, oh, I can't go this way, and, you know, has to ride down Washington. That'd be, that's the dangerous road to ride your bike down too at times. So just so it's clear that it is at least open for, for walkers, joggers, bikers, anybody else who's passing through that way.
Okay. So do I need to repeat that motion, or can we get a second? I'm happy to try again. I will make a motion to authorize the town manager to close off South Lake Drive for safety reasons and to refer to the Conservation Commission, Open Space Committee, and Parks and Recreation for their views on a permanent decision for South Lake Drive. Is there a second for that?
You wanted to add the May 3rd date?
Right, right. And the closure would be up to and including May, May 3rd, 2021.
And, and I was going to say, Mr. Carroll, if you could also include the, again, just for clarity, the vehicular or, you know, close to vehicles or something like that. Is that all right?
No, that's okay. And, and to post signs, closing it for vehicular traffic only. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded by Vice President Hum. Further discussion? No, Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello? And I also vote aye. The motion carries. So, Mary, if we can make sure we put this also on our agenda for May 3rd? Thanks. So the next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on a proposed Seconk asphalt plant. First, I'd like to call on our town solicitor to kind of give us an update. For those of you who are interested in this subject, if you go to our website and then go to our agenda, there's some very useful information, including some links to help inform you on where things stand in Seconk, but I'll ask Mike Risselar, our town solicitor, to kind of take us through that, please.
Sure, I'm more than happy to give you a summary of what is happening and what is going to happen. So the plant is being located in an industrial zone within Seconk, and asphalt plants are permitted use in that industrial zone. So the applicants are subject to very little review. There are two types of review at the local level. The first is the planning board, and they concentrate on site plan development, how the site's going to be built out, et cetera. And the planning board in Seconk has already provided their permission for the applicant to go forward. The second stop at the local level is the Conservation Commission, and they're looking at proposed alterations to wetlands. They were supposed to meet and discuss this matter on February 8th. However, the applicant requested that they withdraw their petition prior to that meeting to basically go back and redo the plans. So that new Conservation Commission meeting has not yet been chosen, but when it is, we'll certainly get the word out to everyone. The final stop will be with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Department of Environmental Protection, and what they will be looking at are how emissions from the asphalt activities are going to be handled. That, that'll be sort of the final stage of review. Now, as we got to the town of Barrington, the town doesn't have legal standing to, for instance, object to this plant, because you have to have property abutting the area within 300 feet of where it is located. The closest point that the town of Barrington is to the Seconk plant is approximately 2,800 feet. So we don't have the ability to go there and actually object and have standing. On the other hand, we can certainly ask them for consideration of some of the concerns that, that we and other communities that surround the proposed asphalt plan have, and we could do that by way of correspondence from the, from the council to the Conservation Commission and express our views. So that's sort of a, a quick update on, on where we are, and I'm. on, on where we are, and I'm open to answering any questions that anyone may have.
Before we get to those questions, at our last meeting, we voted to send a letter to the selectmen and the Conservation Commission, asking them if they would mind continuing their hearing to allow us to look into these things further. Almost no sooner than we had done that, they, the application was withdrawn, so it was continued essentially on its own. I, I will recommend, and after we get through some questions, that we still send a letter. We didn't want to just do something without the consent of the council, but I can send a letter simply asking that they give our, our residents some consideration as they, as the, these matters come before their Conservation Commission, even though we don't have legal standing, and point out that we would urge our own panels to do so in a similar situation. And, and that would just be, I mean, that's, I think, basically, we don't have legal right to object, but that would allow us, you know, just request that our, our residents be able to weigh in. Does that make sense to our council?
It absolutely does make sense. I think that is the best you are going to be able to do, to be honest with you.
Okay. Now, of course, our, you know, there's, there's power and there's influence. We don't have the power to object, but our residents, and, and there are many voices, combined with those in Rehoboth and Swansea and in Seconk, may be able to be heard on this, and I know folks are interested in doing that. So that's why I'd urge you to look on our website and go through to our, the attachments to our agenda, because you'll see there some very useful links. Would anyone on the council like to be heard? Counsel Breyer?
I have, a resident that I was speaking with about this issue a couple days ago shared her idea of what we could do, and I just don't have the legal understanding to know if it's possible. But whereas, we don't have standing as a town to object to the asphalt plant, does Barrington have standing with Seconk, or does Rhode Island with Massachusetts with regard to the zoning and permitting of allowing such a facility that could pollute our air and our water?
So I'll ask our solicitor to, to answer that.
So, so the, the answer is, is no. It would, similarly, the town of Seconk wouldn't be able to object to something that the town of Barrington wanted to do that might affect them. And being able to prove, by the way, that this asphalt plant would pollute our water and our air will be extremely difficult. The applicant is going to have to convince the Commonwealth's Department of Environmental Protection that it will do neither. And if they don't meet that standard, they're, they're not going to be able to go forward. I, I don't see how any community which is not abutting the proposed, well, not the proposed, the actual industrial site in Seconk will have the ability to participate in legal proceedings. That's what she was suggesting, Jacob, or?
Yeah, so the, the comment was, you know, attorney generals of one state can sue another state for recourse. So I just wanted to understand the situation better and, and get back to her.
Yeah, it's, I mean, number one, that would have to happen after the fact. There would have to be an actual injury that is provable. It can't just be something that might be anticipated. But it's good that people are thinking outside the box.
And in terms of that sort of creative thinking, I should point out that our, our representatives to the General Assembly are continuing to work the, the way that they can on this. And that, I know that Jason Knight, for example, has been reaching out to our Rhode Island Attorney General on this issue to see if we can exercise any influence. The other thing that we, we tried to do, come up with a creative legal theory, was to talk about public nuisance. And, and that was something also that we wouldn't unfortunately have standing to sue. Public nuisance is, you know, for example, if your neighbor starts blasting loud music constantly, that's interfering with your, your way of life. We are not abutters, we're, although we're very close, it would be hard to do that. And in any case, it would, it's sort of premature for that, unfortunately, because they are going to say to DEM, and if they do this, I hope they're right, but they're gonna say to DEM, this is gonna be fine, you won't, there won't be any pollution, you know, this, this, people won't know it's there, it's, it's the latest technology. I'm sure they'll say that. We won't find out if that's true until after it's already built. And at that point, maybe someone, certainly other people could have a claim, but I don't think the town of Barrington would. Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this? Okay, do we see any hands? Because I'm not...
No hands.
Okay. Okay, so I will make a motion to authorize the council president to write a letter to the selectmen and the Conservation Commission, urging them to allow our Barrington residents to be heard on the issue of the asphalt plant, and noting to them that we would urge our planning board and zoning board to allow Seconk residents to do so in a similar situation. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries.
And I will keep you advised of when that next meeting is, so that the council and the public are aware of the rescheduled Conservation Commission hearing.
The next item on the agenda is item seventeen, and this is to discuss an act on the financial town meeting. And I've got a note here for Ken Block, but before we get to that, I wanted to give our town moderator an opportunity to talk about the financial town meeting in these extraordinary times. So I would ask our moderator, Richard Staples, to, to speak for us.
Thank you, Mike. I, I realize that the financial town meeting is actually organized and put on by our very competent Board of Canvassers, but I appreciated you giving me a call a few weeks ago, Mike, to figure out, to get my thoughts. First of all, I was elected in November, and when I was elected, I was hoping that by the financial town meeting, we wouldn't be dealing with the vestiges of the COVID-19 crisis, but I think we are going to still be seeing some, some restrictions in place as we move forward to our FTM season in May. So I put a little memo together, which was, I think, included with your agenda, just giving some of my thoughts. And I would lead off by saying, I thought that the Board of Canvassers and town officials did a great job of pulling together our FTM outdoors in July of 2020. And, you know, that certainly was the, the right venue for the times, given where we were circumstantially then. I was on the Board of Committee on Appropriations, as I have been for the prior several years, and so I got to observe that firsthand, hoping I would never have to repeat it. It was pretty clear to me that one of the big benefits that we have in 2021 over 2020 is the fact that we have a, a population here in Barrington that is getting vaccinated. So it is pretty clear to me that that, combined with what we hope will be continuing downward-trending numbers, mean that maybe by FTM season, we might see some changes in the general restrictions that are in place, but I'm not gonna make any assumptions like that at the time. But I did think that one of the first things we should consider, which I, I believe the town council has the authority to do, if it's recommended, would be to actually move the FTM back further in the fiscal year to allow as many Barrington residents to be vaccinated as possible before the FTM is held. We did slip into the next fiscal year in 2020, I think in part because we were all kind of reeling under the relative recent rise in COVID. But we, with advanced planning, maybe could get something pulled together and maybe do it late in June, just before the end of the fiscal year. And I think the, the fact that it was moved out of a weekday night onto a weekend morning was pretty well received by a lot of folks, because I certainly have heard complaints over the years from people who didn't like the fact that school nights, from a childcare perspective and after dark for our older population, those, maybe by moving it to a weekend day late in June, might be a suitable thing to do. Obviously, the big question in last year's FTM, and would be a big question in 2021 as well, is the weather. We would go through a lot of planning, and we had a contingency plan in 2020 in case the weather was not agreeable on the July nineteenth date that we ultimately settled on. So I had a conversation with school officials about just what capacity could we have in Barrington High School if we tried to hold the meeting there. And the answer is, I think, that we could, in fact, accommodate a financial town meeting of several hundred residents within the school building. And that can be done through the, these strategies, which I've outlined in the, in the memo, beginning with the, with the auditorium, which hasn't been in use because of some early pandemic guidelines around carpeted and upholstered seating and room decor, which has since been mitigated by what they are actually finding out about how COVID travels. And I learned with some help from Mike Missori at, at the school department, that if we chose to use the auditorium, subject to whatever social distancing guidelines were in place, with adequate ventilation, which might involve some ancillary or auxiliary ventilation systems, that we could use the auditorium. It seats several hundred people, and I guess just hypothetically, thinking about a one-third capacity could probably seat somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred, a hundred fifty to two hundred people, maybe. And keeping in mind that we don't have to socially distance those who are in the same household, and still be able to maintain social distancing for the rest. So figure a hundred to a hundred fifty, maybe, in the auditorium, as we have historically in years gone by. Oh, and I would, I would probably recommend that we actually host the meeting in the auditorium with the, with the stage and the audiovisual information, you know, complement that we have there. The second source of seating that would be feasible would be the cafeterias. And again, I think with social distancing, probably could accommodate well over a hundred people in that, in that facility as well. The gym would require some upgrade in terms of the technology that's in the gym, but again, being a large space and pretty well ventilated could also seat a pretty good number of folks, maybe another hundred, a hundred and fifty there. So when you kind of put that all together, you're maybe somewhere in the three to four fifty, five hundred range, again, keeping in mind kind of where restrictions are at that point. I think the biggest sort of aha moment for me when I, in my discussions with the school department is the fact that we have interlinked technology between our auditorium and every classroom in the building. So it just keep, you know, keep, sort of visualize the idea that classrooms could actually be attendance pods. So they've had classes in these classrooms with about fifteen students per classroom, interlinked with video, and that could actually happen, I would think, perhaps primarily in the hallway that leads down from the auditorium down toward the library. And in that, in that part of the complex, there are about ten classrooms, figure fifteen people per classroom, another hundred and fifty. And the library itself could also have some seating in it that would, will help our numbers even more. So while outdoors is still an option, and maybe a, still an attractive option, and maybe something we might be willing to do, I think there is the ability to host the financial town meeting in the school, as long as we don't have, what is it, nineteen eighty-eight tent rally with twelve hundred people showing up. And I guess that's, you know, we'll have to kind of see how our, our budget review process goes this spring, and maybe that'll be a litmus test as to whether or not this kind of an arrangement is one that would be adequate and feasible for the townspeople. I do think that, given what our charter requires for the ability of townspeople to be present, to amend the budget, to put motions to, to forward to amend and to vote, and the fact that the budget is a dynamic process right up until the time that final vote is taken at the FTM, that we do need to do everything we can as a community to keep the in-person financial town meeting going. I know there had been some discussion last year, and maybe still might be some this year, about going virtual. I'm very concerned about, about linking people from a tech, through technology, the age of some of our residents who like to participate in the FTM. I myself have a mother in her nineties who is technologically challenged, not as much as some, I think, but still. And God forbid, you had some kind of a larger infrastructure problem with technology that could also disenfranchise voters. So I, I'm, I myself personally think that trying to do an in-person financial town meeting is really the correct way to go. And I just wanted to put some thoughts on the table based on my conversations with the school department about the fact that it's possible to evaluate the, the Barrington High School as a location for the FTM in 2021.
Thank you. I wanted to just point out a couple of things, Richard. One thing that we didn't have last year was, I believe every classroom at the high school has an air purifier in it. And also, the windows would be, likely be open, so that would offer additional...
So, so early in the day would be good. In fact, when I was talking with the school department, they said, if you have it, the date that I kind of put in my memo was maybe Saturday, the twenty-fourth of June. It's after the end of the school year, but it is getting into the early days of what you could describe as the warm summer season. And they said, if you want to be able to open the windows, then maybe nine AM is a good time to start, because if you had a meeting at one in the afternoon, you want all the windows to be closed, because it might be eighty-five to ninety degrees outside. So, yes, but air ventilation through, from windows is something the school department has been doing all year, and is certainly something that's feasible. And you're right, the HEPA filters that have been put in, and the fact they have portables available to help with some areas of the high school, or we could always acquire those from some other place if it's felt like it's needed, is also a possibility. I would also point out, while it would take some technology, pre-planning, it's possible, in the school department's opinion, that people in a remote classroom or room setting could actually speak on video into the main meeting room. It would require some laptop links, and it would be a bit of a technology challenge, but thinking about trying to keep people from having to move around in the building, get them in their place, get them socially distanced, let them stay there if they have something they want to say. We can make sure they have the capacity. Maybe, maybe it's stepping out in the hall, maybe it's actually doing it in their classroom, to actually testify or prevent, provide commentary from their location, rather than people coming into the auditorium. And then just another thought, I put this in the memo, but you, conceivably even for votes, could collect ballots from places around the building and ballot boxes and bring them in the, run the through machine to prevent the, the queuing up of a line in the, in the aisles, which we've seen in years gone by. So, a lot of planning to do, and I hope the Board of Canvassers can take some of these ideas and improve on them, and, or either that or run screaming away from what I said and go in a completely different direction. But I'm looking forward to hosting the meeting, running the meeting wherever it is, and I hope I do as great a job as my predecessors have done.
I'm sure that you will. I, I should, I do think that it's up to the town council to, to determine... to determine some of those things. I also don't think that we need to decide those tonight because everything's in a state of flux. We ought to be thinking ahead, obviously, and and of course, the the outside option is is out there if if things are begin to really move in the wrong direction in terms of COVID. But as we're all kind of crossed fingers that with essentially three full months and part of June, if we do, if we are able to move that, we do move it. Hopefully, we'll have vaccinated much of our town to provide that proof.
Well, I think, well, I don't think anybody's really ready in the health community to really try to explain how things can be different for people when they're vaccinated. It is possible that by the time you get to those dates, there may be some relaxed guidelines around the vaccinated population. So we have a possibility even in if it is an indoor setting that maybe some of those guidelines might be relaxed a little bit if you actually have a group that is a meeting together, all of whom have been vaccinated. Obviously, the Department of Health is nowhere near trying to make those determinations at this point. They're just trying to get the vaccines at arms. But I do think we have, you're right. I think one of the things that probably is helpful and prudent is to wait and not make too many hard decisions too early. I mean, we obviously have to plan, but it's very possible that we may be in a different place in terms of what our health guidelines look like in May and maybe even more so in June if we move to that later date.
Right. I would also note, too, that there's there's actually a conflict, I think. State law, a law passed last year in light of the pandemic allows for, very clearly, I think allows for us to move our our FTM. Our charter didn't change. So, you know, I I suppose we could, you know, the the town moderator could gavel it open and then say, I'm continuing this for health and safety reasons until if we had to, you know, just pro forma, gavel it open and closed on that date. Certainly, we we have lots of experience with not going forward on that date. You mentioned the the tent FTM outside. I I believe that that started inside and then it became clear that it wasn't going to have enough. So they had to continue it and hold it outside. I think that was the case.
I hate hesitate to even bring the idea up, to be very honest with you, but.
Okay, so I'd like to open it up to members of the council to talk before we go to the public, if if anyone on the council has anything they want to say about it. Counselor Brier.
Is to piggyback on something Moderator Staples said at the end. Well, first, I think a very creative outside the box idea that sounds like if things progress nicely with COVID and it's safe to do it inside, that certainly sounds like a well-thought-out plan. But with the idea that it's too early to make any hard decisions, I I agree with. And that's why I think it's critical that we have the research done well in advance so that when the time comes, if things haven't improved with COVID, that we will be able to host it virtually and that the technology challenge is not the reason not to do it. Because we've been meeting remotely for a year now. And the only difference between the FTM and a council meeting is the number of people and the number of people who vote. Being able to make motions at any time is something that we already have solved. So the only issue is the the voting piece with larger numbers.
Well, I think that's, I think there are a few other things. First, everyone at the FTM can make a motion. So it's not just that everyone votes, but every single person can make a motion. The other thing is not everyone has a computer. And I think we found out with the vaccination issue that quite a few people don't. I I dealt with a gentleman who called me. He was 92 years old and he had an issue with tax exemption, wanted to be heard. And he didn't have a computer or certainly internet at his home and was asking how he could be heard. So he could obviously do it on the phone as as everyone has that option now. But even that was something we kind of guided him through. We were ready to have the folks, you know, Kathy and her team were ready to call him on that night to kind of guide him through that. Multiply that times, I don't know how large a number, but that that could make it pretty significant, a pretty significant obstacle.
So with with the everybody can make a motion is no different than everybody in our meeting being able to speak during public comment. The only difference is they say, I make a motion to instead of just starting their public comment. With regard to the computer, if the school department is able to open up a school for this, they also have a large stock of computers. And I'm sure we could have volunteers who could safely provide people with assistance in computers if they choose to go somewhere in person. But it would allow people who for health reasons don't want to be in a dangerous setting to stay home and participate in the FTM.
Again, I I just would disagree with that because it's a little different. We have an agenda here. We list all the things we're going to vote on. Going into the FTM, there are hundreds of permutations of things that could be voted on. And that's just hundreds of opportunities for someone to say, I clicked, did it work, you know, and anyone who's helped their their parents through guided them through some piece of software knows that it can be tough for older folks to use software they're not used to. So.
If I could just add, our our experience with the COVID vaccine signup is testament to the large, large number of people that would be disenfranchised by a virtual meeting. I we had that, we had to hire four temporary people to answer telephones because people didn't have computers.
How was attendance at last year's FTM compared to the previous few years?
I think it was higher than a couple of years before. When we did the middle school, we had years where we had trouble getting 100 people.
Not recently.
I think it was about 175 this year, this last year, Jacob, but I also think it's it's really impossible, in my opinion, having been on the COA for a few years, to provide a linear comparison between one financial town meeting's attendance and the next because the issues that are presented and the and the potential controversies around what is proposed to be in or out varies from year to year. So I, yeah, I just would be cautionary about trying to provide a trend line on attendance and think that we would be either above or below or about the same in 2021 as we have been in prior years. That's why I think, I mean, I I sort of went a little down the corridor, if you will, at the high school. Because I think it's if you do opt for an indoor setting, you have to be prepared conceivably, conceivably, you might have to be prepared to to wire up and do the whole school, which the school department said they can do. They every every classroom in the building is interconnected. I mean, there are technology ramp ups that need to happen. But if you figure that, then you've got dozens of classrooms that could conceivably be used as pods while still staying indoors. Although, as that gets more complicated, then maybe that makes the outdoor option more attractive, which is why I think it's really, in my opinion anyway, probably a multi-headed planning thing of Plan A, Plan B, given the uncertainties about COVID and 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 how does the budget review season go and what do we think is going to happen on whatever date we ultimately have the FTM?
Right.
I think having Plan A and Plan B is good, and I think it's it would be irresponsible not to have Plan C, which would be to hold it virtually, if that's what public health guidelines would indicate.
Anyone else on the council? Yes, Counselor Conway.
For children over the last year have been, oh, sorry, now I'm basically. Have been operating in a hybrid model. Is it possible to have an FTM that would operate in a hybrid model, especially since we're we have the opportunity to wire up the classrooms? Would we be able to do some people who, if they felt uncomfortable, could still be a part of it remotely while those in the building would be who felt comfortable enough to gather would be able to do that? Just thinking, could we have a a combination of all of the factors so those who felt comfortable gathering could do so? And those who did not could remain home?
Yeah. I guess I, you know, I know that Counselor Brier and I disagree on this. My, I worked for a software company for 10 years. And watching how a lot of what what seems simple become very complicated. There are so many different factors, but I think the biggest factor is providing is recognizing the technological difficulties to overcome for many of our older residents. So, you know, the question is if if you're going to offer that, do you have some kind of responsibility to offer it to everyone? And if you do offer it to everyone, does that mean you have a one-for-one person guiding somebody through? Because you may need that for every every person who doesn't have a computer. It's the first time they've looked at the software and and so on.
And my, oh, sorry. My suggestion was more that if people wanted to, I was at the FTM last year and I felt that people were very socially distant and responsible. But if people wanted to be in person, they could be in person and socially distanced. But if they wanted to or felt that they had a need to, since we are able to connect the rooms anyway, just wondering if it'd be a possibility. Throwing it out there as as sort of the the Goldie Bear situation.
Sure.
I think hybrid is is the best approach because it solves the issue of people who have technology difficulties and a lack of comfort. And it solves the issue of people who can't attend because of health reasons. But we can only do hybrid if we do the research to make sure that we can host a virtual one.
Except that if you're offering for some people to do it remotely, you have to offer for every person to do it remotely. And so that means that the people who want to do it remotely but don't have a computer, you have to account for that and you have to provide them with a computer and provide them with someone who's going to guide them through using that computer, particularly if they're not familiar with any kind of technology.
Are you sure that's accurate?
Oh, sure.
That if that if we host a hybrid meeting, we have to provide computers to anybody who doesn't have them?
If you offer people the the, if you say people have a right to vote from home, you know, I'm I'm sure that this hasn't been tested in in Rhode Island, it probably hasn't been tested anywhere, but it seems to me that if you offer some people the right to to vote from home, that that right has to be universal. Counselor Castell.
Practically speaking, they could view the meeting in person if their computer connection wasn't working. It seems to me the barrier was voting, which we might be able to overcome, especially if we know amendments in advance. As has been the case at times in the past where you could have a drop box where people verify who they are and drive and vote. If the technological barrier is is truly voting online, we may be able to deal with that or at least explore the option that that's so that we know what what we're facing. I tend to think the the hybrid model makes makes some sense. It gives people, it gives people the choice.
Okay. Counselor Brier.
Mike Arcillo, do you have an opinion on whether if we had a hybrid FTM, we would have to provide computers to everybody?
Yeah, so tonight I don't, but I'll look into it. I I don't think you have to make this decision tonight as to what's going to happen. Frankly, I I think you should at least wait until April so that we see where we're at in terms of the whole COVID pandemic, et cetera. And I will have some thoughts for you by then on whether or not legally that would be required. I I think we're in very new territory, as Mike mentioned. And let me do some homework and and see what may or may not have happened elsewhere at this point.
Yeah, I agree. It's too early to make the call, but part of not making the call now is is planning to be able to make the virtual call when it's time to.
Okay. Lisa Lowenstein has her hand raised. Ms. Lowenstein.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. I want to thank all of you for letting me speak. I've been listening very carefully. I do feel as though last year there was an issue of voter suppression inadvertently. The reason I make that observation is because we've seen a huge uptick in participation in town council meetings during COVID as opposed to before COVID, it was because of access. So although we can't necessarily draw conclusions, looking in series from year to year at town council meetings, we can look in parallel town council meetings versus the FTM and say, that's odd. Why is such a lower percentage relatively of the community interested in the FTM? I do believe that what Counselor Conway said and what I believe also the moderator, Mr. Staples and Jacob Brier have mentioned is that going for a hybrid option is necessary and we need to do it immediately for the simple fact that we might not know in a month what's going to come down the line. I've been very vocal with town council about the situation with the pandemic, having called for a school closure and a mask ordinance before the state did. And the reason is because I study what's going on in Europe very closely. And my concern is that it's absolutely absurd to even entertain the idea that we're really going to know something useful at any moment in time. The situation with the variants is unpredictable. That's a fact. And the CDC is right now saying we might see another enormous surge and some of the vaccinations might not be effective against it. So not planning now, when last year we ran into this very problem, we brought the subject up in March. We knew in March that we had a pandemic on our hands.
You have 30 seconds.
By the time we knew that we were going to have to do something about it, it was too late. So I strongly recommend that we study shareholders' meetings, technology, Zoom technology, figure out a system and offer a hybrid system and that we start working on it immediately and urgently. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Lowenstein also should, I should point out that you were out front on the mask issue. That's part of the reason that Barrington was the first town in the state with a mask mandate and even before the state. So so that was, that that you certainly were right about that. Ms. Thompson. Mara.
Hi. Sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry. I just have a couple of things. I would like to agree with Counselor Conway that we should look into a hybrid model. I have some concerns around vaccination. I I think it's great that our elderly population are finally on their way to being vaccinated, but as you move down to the different age groups, I think vaccinations may actually be a barrier to participation in the FTM. As we're not really sure, as the previous caller mentioned, that where we'll be in late May, early June. So people will not feel comfortable attending an in-person inside meeting if they're not vaccinated. And while we should obviously worry about excluding elderly members if we go to a technology solution, we should also look at who we're excluding by doing an in-person meeting prior to mass vaccination being completed. There's nothing that I'm reading that says that social distancing is going away. I think that's something to worry about. The school's opening in the fall even. So when you talk about having it indoors, I understand what Mr. Staples was saying about spacing people out in classrooms, et cetera, but there'll be crowd control issues as you take people into buildings and verify that they're able to vote at the meeting. And how would those issues be avoided in a in sort of as you go into the fire, the high school? I'm just trying to understand how you would look at those things. And then there was maybe a mention of a weekend meeting. And I think we're always trying to struggle about when would be the best time to have a meeting, how it excludes people, if it's in the evening with conflicts. I also think that the weekend meeting last year was easier in some ways because lots of activities were canceled. But I would also urge you to like really think about that, moving it to Saturday, whether that's a good or a bad thing. It's hard to know what the answer is on that, but I really think like you need to look at all options in case we don't have the mass vaccination where it needs to be. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I, I'm sorry, Richard, I think you had your hand raised before.
I, my comment is that I, I do think that as we consider this, one of the things we really have to remember is from how the FTM flows is that you have to have votes that drive the meeting to its conclusion and that those votes have, have a bearing on how the meeting moves after that. I, I am, I am a little concerned also just, just thinking about this from the virtual standpoint. We do have the option in our financial town meetings to do secret ballots. I don't think, I don't think they're necessarily insurmountable. They're just things that we have to keep in mind as we start to talk about who is actually enfranchised. That's one reason why I, I, my own self tend to stray more toward the in-person meeting, whether indoors or outdoors, because we know you're there. Everybody's hearing the same thing. There is no technology, therefore everyone's getting the same message and everyone has an equal right to participate in a participatory meeting setting. All of these have their advantages and disadvantages. So I just think it's a matter of trying to figure out how to balance them. And quite frankly, as the moderator, and I think I can also maybe at least include the Board of Canvassers in this. We have to make sure that whatever we come up with is manageable. We may come up with a very elaborate hybrid model, but it, it, in terms of actually the day of, actually making sure that all those dig soft puzzle pieces fall into place in the right way for running the meeting and, and actually hosting and managing the meeting from a technology and, and agenda standpoint have to be factored in there too. So I just would throw that out.
Okay. Lisa Daff. Please, Dr. Daff.
Good evening, Lisa Daff, Vice Chair of the COA. And I just wanted to agree with Mr. Staples. I, I think that the financial town meeting needs to be in person. I think whether it's inside or outside is really the only question, bearing the conditions at the time that decision gets made. I, I, I think anything that involves allowing virtual, especially with our older population, I have taken care of a lot of older people in my practice. And they were, they, they were calling the hospital to find out where they're going to get their vaccine. They're waiting for someone to call them. There are probably still people waiting to call them. I, I think that that's the technology that's a problem. We can't disenfranchise anyone that's not able to use a computer. And it's one thing to check an email, but to manage some of these Zooms and different things like that, it is challenging. If you have parents who have tried it, I, I've had parents and in-laws that we had to do Zoom holidays and birthdays. And it was extremely difficult just for them and they're somewhat computer literate. So I, I do agree with everything that Mr. Staples had to say. I think it needs to go either inside or outside. We had a very successful town meeting. I'm sure a lot of work went into holding that outside. And Jim and the crew did a fantastic job. And things were in worse shape than most likely that they will be moving forward. I also follow the pandemic obviously very closely as I work three inches, you know, from, from a mouth that has no mask on it and have been doing so for a year. So I do know a lot about what's happening there. And, you know, I think things are definitely moving in a, in a, in a good direction. But I, I do think it has to be in person. I think the, you know, trying to manage something hybrid, that just is, I don't even know how that would really work with the flow of the meeting like Richard said. And I just wanted to support, you know, with what I heard him say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Block, you, you had asked and this is, this is your opportunity, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I 100% agree with Councilwoman Conway. A hybrid model is absolutely the way to go. If the goal is not to disenfranchise anybody, you allow people who cannot handle the technology to attend in person and you allow the people who can deal with the technology to attend remotely. There's been a lot of discussion of disenfranchisement. Last year, less than 200 people voted on the budget. And much more importantly, in my opinion, voted on who is going, on who ends up sitting on the Committee on Appropriations. We should be, as a collective whole, very unsettled and unhappy that so few people are participating in the financial town meetings. And I believe the, the reason for that ultimately is because they are so difficult to attend. I've gone to financial town meetings where you have to invest four, five or six hours to be physically in the room to participate in democracy. Westerly, for example, has solved that problem. They now have what they call an all-day financial town meeting that allows people to vote on the proposals over the course of an entire day. There are plenty of ways for us to solve the problems that we have here. The technology for sure allows us to conduct this meeting remotely. There is zero reason why we have to do it in person. But most importantly, and, and I've had this feeling for a while now, the basic structure of our financial town meeting is in itself. It disenfranchises a, a large number of people who can't be bothered with the time burden of spending so much time to participate in our budget meetings. We can do this, we should do it. And we should structurally change the way this meeting is conducted to open it up for a much broader cross-section of our residents to participate. So I am a technologist. I do this for a living. I can assure you that we can do this. The technology supports doing it. Hybrid is absolutely the way to go. And, and for the Council President, I would be stunned if there was a legal requirement to provide a computer to every person when we, when we avail, when we provide an ability for them to vote in person as opposed to being on a computer. I, I've got to believe, and I'm not a lawyer, but I would be stunned if there was legal precedent that said you had to go do that. I, I can't imagine that that would be the case. So please, I know we have a new council and you haven't heard me ask for this before, but we really need to reform the way the financial town meeting works. We should have thousands of people participating and we certainly should not be making plans to only allow a few hundred to participate.
Thank you, sir. I should, no, you know, Mike Orsillo, you should, and anyone. If you can look for examples, if we were to change the structure, and we talk about this from time to time, if we were to change the structure of the FTM to remove, for example, the ability of people to make motions at that time and we moved closer to what's called a representative town meeting, there have been representative town meetings held virtually. That is, that's, those are the only ones that I'm aware of. I'm not aware of any one that wasn't representative. That is Lexington, Massachusetts, for example. You have 100 people who are elected as representatives to the financial town meeting and they vote on a set agenda and, and there aren't changes to that. That's much simpler. That's, that's closer to what in fact we're doing now. It's just rather than having five, it's having 100. I'm just not aware of anybody who has a financial town meeting like ours that is not a representative one with as many abilities and opportunities to make motions that has done it. But I'm certainly willing to be proven wrong, would like to be. TR, please.
Hello again. I'd just like to reiterate Mr. Staples and Lisa Daff's comments. No, we have no way to go to hybrid. We already showed that we had an opportunity to do a financial town meeting. Our financial town meetings depend on what the hot topic is every year on how many people decide to show up and vote. If we want to go to a hybrid, I believe we have to change the charter if I'm not mistaken. I think Mike would be able to tell us a little bit more on that. But as of now, we already showed that we can have an outside financial town meeting. Everybody stayed six feet apart. There was no problem. So it all depends on what the hot topic is going to be this year. You know, and to reiterate, I know Mr. Block is never happy on anything that is done in town. So, you know, not to go off subject, but if we're going to change something, I believe it has to be changed through town charter.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, TR. Donna Personius, please.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am in agreement with Councilman Breyer and Counselor Conway. Technology has gotten to the point where there's absolutely no reason why we cannot be planning for a hybrid situation. I think it gives the best opportunity of both worlds. People can attend in person or they can do virtually. I was disenfranchised last year for the very first time and did not vote in a town financial meeting for the very first time last year. Born and raised in Barrington, I have been to so many financial town meetings with the exception of when I went to college and worked in New York for a couple of years. I even brought a newborn one year to the financial town meeting with a stroller and sat there until two o'clock in the morning. And I just think of all the moms with small kids or fathers who don't come to our town meetings, who would have an opportunity to participate. I think it opens up new vistas and new opportunities to participate. Our Senate, our State Senate is doing, is finding ways to communicate and participate through people calling in. And I mean, there are so many different ways. I just participated on a vote online with one of the groups that I participate in, a political group. There's software out there that can be used. I'd be happy to hook either Jacob or Counselor Conway with a, you know, with a link to that software to see if it might be appropriate. I think we need to think out of the box. And I'd like to see a hybrid. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Dolcinos. Paul.
Thank you. This is why, when I was on the Charter Commission in 2010, Mike, I recommended what you suggested, that we've outgrown the functionality of the financial town meeting and that we should go, like many towns in Massachusetts, and have elected town meeting representatives. And that would eliminate this whole issue. But of concern, that obviously would take a charter change and we can't do that. So we have to deal with where we are right now. And the immediacy is that ensure the integrity of the process itself. And the hybrid process sounds wonderful, but how do you ensure? I've worked these town meetings with the Board of Canvassers. Every individual comes in, shows their ID and is crossed off the voters list. How do you do that in a remote situation? So the integrity of the process. If you want to look at a hybrid situation, I was actually hybrid and that we have a touch for those who want to be outside and also use facilities inside the high school itself. We cover over 600 students right now in the building at any given moment. I think the capacity of the high school and the technology is already there. It's hardwired. There's no reason that we can't do an in-person financial town meeting. If you don't do that, you know, we're looking at this hybrid thing with people voting from home through their computer. I see an equal protections issue right there. I don't see a way of verifying identification. And I would be concerned that we lose control of the process. But in the long term, I agree, we need to go to a town meeting representative type system. Right now, the system's already flawed. Where special interest groups flood this, flood the zone, vote and then leave before the meeting's over on special interests. And, and that's where we've kind of outgrown that as a town. We need, in the long range, we need to look at a town meeting rep type situation. Thanks.
Thank you. Jordan, please.
Hi, it's good to think, I know it's a tough one to say there's a lot of consonants next to each other. So I moved to town last May and I have felt myself actually very fortunate as a side effect of COVID to be able to attend the town council meetings through a virtual setting. I want to say I agree with a lot of, I think her name was Donna, what she said. Accessibility sort of comes in in all forms. And when things are required for us to attend in person, which I want to acknowledge, I, I definitely see the, the reasonings and the benefits of as many people have stated. But it does place limitations on people with childcare or maybe, you know, COVID aside or feeling under the weather from, from something else. And I just wanted to also mention that I work for a, a large university and we actually received communication from one of our provosts today. And they're considering in a quote unquote post-COVID world into the future, how they can do things like teach virtually and hold large stakeholder meetings virtually. And specifically talking about a hybrid model and utilizing that for a lot of different reasons. So a lot of places, COVID has really changed the way, I think, how they operate and how they think about operating. You know, I understand we're talking about a meeting that is, is coming up very quickly, but I really think the town would be doing itself a disservice for the future to not at least start looking into something to do with the hybrid model and, and how you can get more people in town involved in meetings some way. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim, do you see anyone else from the public with their hand raised?
I don't see any other hands raised at the moment.
Okay. Great. So let me suggest a couple of things and I, I, I think we can, this is actually a discuss an act, so we can vote on this. But I don't, I don't think that we should vote on the date just yet. I think we should explore that right now. But let me suggest that we get some, what do you call that? Crowdsource this. And, and anyone who wants to should submit to their, to, you can submit it to me or to Counselor Breyer or any member of the council, examples of financial town meetings that have been done virtually nationwide. I've looked and I, I certainly could be wrong, but I didn't find a single one other than those, those representative ones, which I think are very different because they don't allow for the things that we need to do. But if you can find those, those would be great models to follow, certainly. And, and also software, anybody who wants to submit software that we can look at. My guess is that, I, I hope I'm not saying this wrong, but I, I think Counselor Breyer is probably going to make a motion that we explore this issue of hybrid slash virtual town meeting as an alternative. And, and so it would make sense to get some help from folks on what kind of software they think would do that. And then we could evaluate whether that software would actually do some of the things that we need it to do. Provide, for example, there are things like providing for confidential voting. You know, how do you do that? How do you make sure that these folks are, are actually registered voters in Barrington? And what do you do if someone's having trouble getting through? All of those things. That's just a, a suggestion, but I, I will open it up for Counselor Breyer.
So what, I, I don't know what the right motion would be, but what I'd like is to be able to write up a list of requirements that we would have for software or a service provider to come in and manage the technology of a hybrid meeting. And we can put an RFP out and get responses from professionals that would advise us on how it could be done and what it would cost.
Okay. So who would, who would list those requirements?
So I'd be happy to work with you. We're, we're on separate sides of how feasible it is. I think it would make sense, maybe we can email back and forth just the two of us. So no Open Meetings Act concern, to come up with a list of requirements that are needed from a provider. And then Jim or somebody on his staff can issue an RFP and we can look at responses at a subsequent meeting. But I also, I don't want to take the opportunity away from anybody else who has different ideas or would want to work on that.
So, Richard, please.
I was just going to suggest to Jacob's point that it may be good to actually structure that RFP a little bit around what our charter requirements are to make sure that the RFP is written in such a way that it, it squares up with what our legal requirements are under the charter at this current time. Because I think, I think there, unless you've really read the charter and really understand this as, as Mike Orsillo certainly would, it's, it's easy to say, yes, you could do this. But to your point, Mike Carroll, you, you've looked around the country for another Barrington example and haven't been able to find one. So we just have to make sure that anyone we engage in trying to plan for this, which I, you know, if we can find it, great. We just have to make sure that they understand just how unique our situation is, that, that they, how unique our situation is, that they answer those particular, rather unique positions that Barrington has to address and be legally defensible, especially since we're relying on technology that is open to interpretation about what access means if all of a sudden you don't have access.
Right. Let me suggest that the, we, we ask that the Board of Canvassers provide us with a list of what they think the requirements are. We ask for help from the town moderator to provide us with a list of what he thinks they are. The town clerk, who's, you know, responsible for the voting, could provide us with a list. And then Counselor Breyer, you and I could try and come up with a list. Then we can all submit those to our solicitor and see if we've left anything out. And that way, we could sort of create a checklist of what would be required. Because I think, you know, given that it hasn't been, it certainly hasn't been done in Barrington before, it would be easy to forget things like, okay, we got to get, unfortunately, because of the way it is in Rhode Island, we have to see an ID in order to validate voters. I think that's kind of a silly law, but that's the current law in Rhode Island, that we have to see ID in order to vote, unless you're voting by mail and only recently. So, did you want to make up a motion, Jacob?
So, I do. I mean, ultimately, the motion is, I think we should go to RFP for a vendor who would manage a hybrid meeting. I agree with your suggestion of how we would get the information needed that would be included in that RFP, but given that all the information goes to the solicitor, I'd encourage that it be all five members of the council could write in there, and not just you and I. And certainly Jim as well. Whoever wants to send in requirements, but I would like to see what that is before it goes out, because I think, from hearing some of the concerns that people have, and, you know, I also work at a software company that builds this type of stuff that would execute I know that the technology is an easy part of this. That's the most difficult part, which there are also solutions for, is validating who's voting and how they can do so secretly. But that's also a solved problem, but that's much harder than any of the other issues around who can make motions and when, and things like that. So maybe, if we have a deadline for when that information goes to the solicitor and they review it, maybe at our March 22 meeting, we can review an RFP before it goes out, and then it could be issued that following week.
Sure. Richard, Richard, you had your hand up.
So I was just wondering if Mike Orsillo had had any kind of historical document that sort of describes the architect of the, architecture of the financial town meeting, and what the requirements are under our charter that need to be addressed. I don't know if anything like that has ever been created, Mike.
Richard, nothing's been created, but the sections on the financial town meeting in the charter are succinct. They're pretty straightforward with regard to motions, and when they're made, and who, and what it takes for a secret ballot, you know, the 20%. So I am very aware of what the requirements are, so I'm more than happy, once I receive input from all these other bodies, to compile it all into one list of items that a company bidding on this would have to meet all of the following requirements.
Good. I just, I just think the architecture needs to be around what we're dealing with under the current charter. I've heard some good ideas for things to do later.
Oh, for sure. We can't amend the charter.
We just have to, we just have to sort of deal with the hand we're dealt this year, and
Yes.
our inputs around that particular set of facts. Thank you.
Vice President Carroll, I could suggest, perhaps, so all five councils can participate, if any, or any resident citizen, they can email Mary and myself, and we will correlate the inputs and get them to the solicitor's office.
That makes sense. I think that's a good idea. Counselor Breyer, yes?
Just related to the piece about the sticking with the current charter, certainly, that was my full intention with the suggestion, or not the suggestion, of the agreement of Counselor Conway's hybrid suggestion. But with regard to sticking with the charter, there's question of changing the date. I know that the law that was passed, or the executive order that was issued last year that allowed us to move it, was because we had no other option in our charter that allowed us to adopt a budget. And now, because of November's vote, there is another option. So because we have another option, will we be able to move the date?
Yeah, we, Jacob, we've done some research on that, and the answer is yes, you could still move the date this year.
Okay.
Good.
Okay. So just to see if we can move things along, I'm going to make a motion that we provide requirements to the town manager, and that the town manager provide those to our solicitor, and that based on those, the solicitor draft an RFP for a company to provide the services of a hybrid financial town meeting, and that that draft be ready for our March 22 meeting. Did I say that right, Jacob?
Yes, and I will second it, but there's some hands that have been up in the public for a bit. Can we hear them before voting?
We would actually need to, so I'm trying to follow our rules. We need to waive our rules, because our rules currently say that you can speak once on any topic. So we would need to move to waive those rules. Do you want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion to waive the rules.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Vice President, how do you vote?
I'm going to vote nay.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
Counselor Conway? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Nay.
Okay. And I vote nay. So that motion doesn't carry. So, folks, sorry, the rules currently call for that. We can waive those, but there is something I want to get to. So, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the council? Okay. Vice President, how do you vote?
And actually, even before I vote, the only comment I wanted to make is that it sounds like there will be further opportunity for public comment at future meetings. So I wanted everyone to be aware of that. In any event, I vote aye.
Okay. Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Thank you. I would ask that we take something out of order. I am reminded that we have a resolution for Yvette Vary. This Vary is 99 years old, and I am told was on the meeting. I hope she's still on this meeting.
She is still on the meeting. Let me get her for you.
Okay, great.
Okay, give me just one second. She's a wonderful lady. We are at Atria, and this is Yvette.
Oh, Yvette, it's very nice to meet you.
Hold it. Oh, no, hold on, I'll get it for you. I'm just going to put this so you can see on TV. I want you to, let's see. All right. I don't know how to make this big. Oh, the host has asked you, okay.
We can see you, and we can hear you, so.
Okay. She's all set. I don't know how to make that bigger, though, do you? I'm trying to get it so she can see on the big TV, and I'm
Oh, okay. Well, I can only speak for myself, but my picture doesn't get any bigger if you enlarge it, doesn't get any better if you enlarge it.
Okay, she's right there, and there you are up there, Yvette, see? Up there in the TV?
Yeah.
Right there. You can look right in here. Okay, she's all set.
Great. So, this is, this is a great opportunity. When Limer Jerry, who is Yvette's niece, told us about Yvette's birthday coming up, her 100th birthday.
Why are you supposed to know him?
No, he's wishing you happy birthday.
Introduce myself. My name is Mike Carroll, I'm the president of the Barrington Town Council.
You need help?
No, I'll hold it for you.
I want to wish you a happy birthday early, but
Yeah.
this is a great chance for us to kind of have a little bit of a celebration after a long period
Do I know him?
Of unhappiness, and
Look at
we can't have a full party because of the COVID restrictions, but what we're planning is a little bit of a parade with the fire department, the police department, our, I know that the head of our Veterans Council is on, and he's going to be there, hopefully we'll have a couple of veterans there at Atria to celebrate your birthday, one day before your birthday.
Wonderful. Awesome.
And, and we're all looking forward to that. This is a great chance to say happy birthday for your wonderful birthday.
You're on the can't tire.
So I wanted to take out of order the resolution, which I will, I intend to read
I can give you a little rest.
At the birthday party, and not tonight, so you're going to have to, that's another teaser, we'll wait until your birthday party to read the resolution, but I wanted to make a motion to enact the resolution honoring Yvette Vary for her 100th birthday as presented.
Well, thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Breyer. Any further discussion? Okay.
My God, I need one there.
Vice President, how do you vote?
Happy birthday, and aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, and aye as well.
Counselor Conway?
Yeah. Absolute blessing, happy birthday, and aye.
Counselor Costello?
Happy birthday, and aye, it's unanimous.
I also vote aye, so that resolution carries. So what we're going to do, Ms. Vary, is that we will, I will be there, as many people as we can do socially distant, we will have some folks from the fire department, the police department, United Veterans Council, and our manager, and our manager has promised me that he still fits into his Navy uniform.
So does he.
He'll be wearing his uniform as well. So we're looking forward to it.
Very good. We will be looking forward to it as well.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Vary.
They all wished you happy birthday. Say thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Bye now.
And thanks for taking that out of order. I just, I didn't want to, I kept thinking, I don't want to get too late here, because the next item on our agenda, if we go back, is, we've done the town moderator report and acted on the financial town meeting. Also, the next item is to discuss the Sokoloff Plan, and that was kind of a shorthand for providing some funding, and if I could kind of take you through this. We've asked that each member of the council receive a copy of the Sokoloff Plan to capture existable affordable housing, and I intend to make a motion that we create a revolving fund that can utilize the technique of the Sokoloff Plan, or other techniques, including the one that has to do with providing down payment assistance. And I'd like to kind of go through my reasoning on that, if you'll indulge me. So this isn't the first time this has come before the council. In 2015, we had a similar motion to allocate $750,000, and that passed by a 3 to 2 margin. And I was a council at that time. Unfortunately, the Committee on Appropriations did not view that the plan as a prudent one, and they did not include it in its recommended budget that was submitted to the FTM. And it's certainly possible that the COA won't like this if we do pass anything tonight, but I still think it's worth doing, and here are some reasons why. First, in terms of affordable housing, striving for that 10% we know that the Affordable Housing Act sets a local control if we can strive towards that goal. For those who don't make progress towards that goal, the penalty involved is really a loss of control. So what does that mean? I'll give you an example from Barrington not too long ago. A few years ago, a for-profit developer wanted to build more than 20 market-rate condominiums and five affordable units on Lot 3A at Fort Town Farm. This was a terrible idea for a variety of reasons. First of all, I think it was one acre, it might have been two acres, at least one acre zoning out there. So that would mean that you're going to fit three. It was a terrible idea because it risked further endangering a species of turtle, it threatened an important historic site, and it really created a significant health risk because there was no sewer out there and no town water, so it would create a large septic system near drinking water wells, and those wells, we've learned, we learned, were already being infected just from the horses out there. So it was a terrible idea, and our planning board rejected the plan as a bad idea. But in accordance with the Affordable Housing Act, the for-profit developer went to the State Housing Appeals Board, and they overruled our planning board. And at the end of the day, the town of Barrington decided, and we ended up buying that property for $1.1 million. It shouldn't have been developed, we stopped it from being developed, but it was expensive for us to do so. So we gain more local control as we approach that 10% goal, and as we show that we're doing so. Second reason is we should just forget about the act, we should preserve some affordable housing in Barrington. It's just generally a good idea. We don't know what young teacher is out there with a family who want to move to town, and then that teacher may later go on to shape the lives and characters of generations. We want them to be able to move in. We want the people who live in town, who work in town to be able to live here. My own example, my father and mother were able to afford a house on the salary of a Barrington High School teacher, new teacher supplemented by being a coach, and they were able to raise their five kids here. I think the first house they bought in Barrington was $10,000. So trying to preserve affordable housing in Barrington is a good idea, because we're going to get some, there are going to be some folks who can really contribute to our community. And then, it's also good for diversity. We've been talking a lot over the past, almost a year, about making Barrington a more inclusive, and more diverse, and a more welcoming town. And we've spent a lot of time on symbolism, like rallies, and vigils, and the flag, and that's a good thing. I think those are good things, but I think we agree that the most effective way to send the message that we want to send on our community is through hiring, housing, and policing. It can have the most impact there. We've addressed hiring and housing, I mean, hiring and policing, so now it's time to address housing. I should also note that the Housing Down Payment Assistance Plan that we approved last month is a great idea, and it's going to be, it's going to be very helpful, but it's limited. It's limited to people who are already living in Barrington. So we're not going to get anybody from outside Barrington moving into Barrington using the Housing Down Payment Assistance Plan. That's one of the restrictions. This plan would have no restrictions. We would be able to provide down payment assistance, or to essentially buy a low-cost house and flip it, de-restrict it, and then sell it, and take that money and use it for the next project. This plan will create opportunities for people to give their children the kind of education and the kind of lives that we want for our own children. And so, I would, my view is that it's time for us to put our money where our mouths are, and I want to open this up to the rest of the council for discussion, but just so you know, I'm going to make a I'm gonna make a motion at, at some point to, uh, create a revolving fund with $500,000 in this year's budget to be used for the preservation of affordable housing. And, and I'll get to the specifics of that. But I just wanted to open it up for the rest of our council to, um, to tell me what they thought about that. Anybody? Okay, Vice President Humm.
I, I, I have a question on the amounts. How, how do you, how do you decide on the 500,000?
Well, um, originally it was 750,000. That was the, the amount proposed in the Sokoloff Plan. And the idea at that time was that you'd be able to buy two or three houses at once, be rehabbing them, and then sell them over time. And that allows you to take advantage of the, um, any dips in the market that would come. You could seize up um, affordable houses. We're not in that kind of market right now. And we're also in a very tough time, and I recognize that. Um, so as much as we view this, and I think we all view, um, these things as, as a high priority, we also have to be cognizant that it's a tough time. So I've reduced the, the ask from 750,000 to 500,000. The idea that that might be able to provide for a, a purchase of one house, but would certainly be able to provide for a lot of assistance with down payment assistance for folks coming in. And, and the, the hope is that this is a one-time purchase. It's not an annual thing. Because it, it can, you know, it, it can help over time to, um, if you buy a house that's expensive, you can sell that house for roughly the same amount. Sure, Rob.
And, and when this had come before the, the COA the last time around, what was some of the feedback that they gave? And, and for example, was their issue strictly the amount at being 750, or did they have any other um, issues with respect to any of the other mechanics of the, the fund itself?
Um, my memory was that they did not think we would be able to, uh, sell the properties for anywhere close to what we got the properties for. Um, and as, they thought that the costs for doing any rehab work would be higher. They didn't propose a lower amount, uh, at that time. Uh, my own view is that if we do need to rehab the properties, that is a, you know, certain parts of that are gonna have to be contractors. But certain parts of that can be, um, you know, volunteer sweat equity. Um, maybe with our Barrington Day of Caring.
Thank you.
Counselor Brier.
Uh, I very much like the idea of investing in affordable housing and being able to make Barrington more accessible. Um, when I, when I saw this, I reached out to the Chair of the Housing Board, um, to ask uh, if he had been on the, um, on the Housing Board when this first came about. And he had, he vaguely remembered it. It was right around when he had first gotten started. But, um, we, we had a discussion about it and he had some concerns about the overlap of this right now with the Down Payment Assistance Program just getting up and running. And he just didn't know that this was the best way to use the funds. And, and that kind of mirrored my, my personal reaction when reading through this, that certainly investing in, um, affordable housing is important and something I'm very much supportive of. But I have concerns about the numbers in this plan. Um, I don't remember the housing market in 2014 that well, but uh, it looked like the numbers were pretty aggressive even for then. And now it just doesn't seem like um, a, a way to really move the needle. It seems like a, a lot of money upfront that's not going to have a um, a meaningful impact in terms of getting closer to 10% or even in terms of creating more opportunity to make Barrington more accessible. So I, I'm supportive of the idea of, of putting money into this. But I'd like to have the, either this plan and/or other plans kicked around a little with the Housing Board so that they can really, um, look more into how best Barrington can support the, for, um, housing affordability long-term.
Sure. And I, I should point out though, that the difference between this and the plan is that we would actually bring in more diversity into town. And I, I reached out to um, Jim Vincent, who is the president of the Providence NAACP. And I spoke with him about this. He has a lot of housing background, uh, and really understands this. And you know, one of the things he said is that the gap of median incomes between black families and white families in Rhode Island is higher than in most of the other states. And he said that people of color are disproportionately in the lower income group. This presents, this means that it could present an opportunity to, in addition to bringing income diversity into Barrington, bring racial diversity. As much as we all, I think it was unanimous, it was unanimous, we all voted for the, the plan for the Housing Board. That won't, that won't bring a single person into Barrington. Um, because it's only available to people who are already living in Barrington. And it's a great opportunity for them. But this will bring people into Barrington who aren't in Barrington. And that's why I think it's, it's, uh, the, the best way we can do to improve diversity in town.
Right, yeah. This wasn't about doing the down payment one instead of this. It's that that's what the Housing Board is working on now and just ready to launch it. And so it, it might be worth seeing how that works. If it's successful with people who already live in Barrington, perhaps infuse more money into it and expand it. Uh, the only reason why it's limited to Barrington now is what the initial funding source was. But if there was a separate bucket and that was part of the same program, or whatever the program is, I think the Housing Board should weigh in on. Not that, not that we shouldn't do this because we're doing. Uh, I think it's a both and, not an either or, just not the, the Sokoloff Plan. I think some, something else should be looked at.
Well, the, the, the motion that I will make is really for, um, more than just the Sokoloff Plan. It says including but not limited to. And the reason I do that is because I think we've already got a plan, that is the Down Payment Assistance Plan, that the Housing Board has already approved. And this would present more money for that plan and a different audience for it, a different uh, clientele, uh, to, to have the opportunity for those programs. Same programs, but it broadens the people who are available and importantly broadens the, you know, the, hopefully broadens the racial diversity in our town, but uh, certainly would increase the number of, of the income diversity in our town. Counselor Promley, sorry, yes.
No worries, no worries. So, um, I, I am a huge fan of housing affordability and joined the Housing Board of Trustees um, immediately after I came into town just because of that. Um, one of my concerns is that that may be too little. Um, I worry that, I, I, like Jacob, cannot remember exactly what the 2014 housing market was in this area, but we also are in the middle of a huge, we just talked about the, um, potential value of our tax assessments going up by 14%. And so, um, I worry that these numbers are based on dated information from seven years ago and that we may want to refresh the numbers. But I also think we need to act quickly before, um, the housing market within the community is completely unattainable for someone who receives. I mean, at this point it was, um, $220,000 for, you could get three affordable homes. At this point, that's not a possibility within this community. Houses are going on the market and selling for over. So that would be my concern. It's just, I think we need to act with speed, but we also need to, um, bring these numbers up to date. And I know those might be mutually exclusive ideas, but, um, I would support it. I would just hope that we could increase the funding. And I would also like to see the Housing Board of Trustees, obviously since I'm liaison and previously served on that as a, as a key player in this. But I do agree that the, the down payment income was
Uh, I should note, and I don't know if this is already affordable, but I just looked today. We're in a condo, a two-bedroom condo, uh, in Bay Spring that is for, that's going for 162,000. Um, and I believe based on the, the the information from, uh, last month's meeting, that would fall within the maximum purchase price, uh, under the housing limits based on 120% of area median income. So, I, I, you know, that could already be an affordable. I don't know. It doesn't say that, certainly in the ad, but that's, there may be a few like that. I'm envisioning that it's probably more likely to be a, um, the use of the down payment assistance, uh, using that, the funds for that. Uh, that is for outside, uh, folks outside Barrington. And then also sort of anticipating and, uh, there may be an adjustment in the real estate market. And we have to be ready for that. We can't, we can't do it after the fact. We have to have the money ready to, to make those purchases. Anyone else from the council? There's folks from, there's one, um, SJB. I, I don't know who that is, but please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Oh, Steve, hi.
So I thought I would chime in because some questions came up that I happen to know the answers to. Um, the first was, uh, Counselor Humm's question about why appropriations denied the request for 750,000 dollars. And at the time, the explanation given, and I'm not sure it was completely genuine, was that it was a little late in the process. Um, as indicated, the council endorsed the idea to allocate 750,000 dollars, but they did so after the municipal budget had been presented. And that's because it was always presented just by the manager without council input. Um, ultimately, the vote broke down on political party lines. And it was three to two against it. Um, as far as the purpose of the fund, you know, the, the Down Payment Assistance Program is actually a, an upshot out of the Sokoloff Plan. Um, initially, it was anticipated that we would do it as a construction project. We would acquire houses, split them, and put a deed restriction on in the process. We came to realize from the plan that unless you got a four-bedroom house, it's, it's a little more expensive than down payment assistance. Um, all things being equal, you would prefer just to write a check at a closing and take a deed restriction rather than get involved in construction. Um, but that's not always an option you have. Uh, so we, it, at the time, we had developed the plan because a year prior, we had actually asked for the same amount of funding. And the not, the denial at that time was you don't have a plan yet. So it took a certain amount of time to get a consultant to draw one up and, uh, put that in front of us. By that time, the housing market turned. And the big thing there was we missed the recession. Right? The amount of subsidy that goes into each property is much, much lower in a recessionary market where you have low interest rates, low property values. We're in a situation right now where we have high property values, low interest rates. We all know from history, it's not bound to stick that way. Uh, the risk you run is that if it's not funded now, when the low property values come, you will have a committee on appropriations that says, where's your plan? Like they did in 2011 or 2012. And if you don't have one, they won't give you the funding to do it. And you're left flat-footed and you miss the market again. So that's just a little bit of background.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, Paul Gochinos. Paul, please.
Yeah, I was, I think, first came up with you, Mike. Um, I think part of the problem was the, the churn on this, the return on investment, it, it would deplete pretty quick. Um, as far as, we'd be constantly replenishing this fund. And I think for the bang for the buck, getting the number of affordable units um, would not, would not be that valuable in that sense. So that was, that was a, I would prefer that we entertain looking at more market-based solutions to, you know, looking at our zoning, looking at higher density housing, looking at ways where the subsidies and, and the taxpayer burden is not so significant and, and looking at owner occupied starter homes. Uh, and I think that would, uh, with deed restriction, I think, uh, that would bring it uh, the diversity you want and also, uh, the ownership, pride of ownership as well.
Right. We know, um, the, the whole, both of the plans are really around, um, home ownership, not, not rental, uh, units. So, um, the, the, the motion that I intend to make would be broad enough to allow the use of the funds for the Down Payment Assistance Program, but for people outside of Barrington. And broad enough to use the, the, essentially the Sokoloff Plan. Um, but my view is that you don't really want to use that now. I think you want to wait for the market adjustment uh, in order to do that. But you gotta have the money at that time, whenever that happens, to be able to do it. So I think in the short run, we, it, it, the Housing Board is gonna be able to use it um, more effectively for the, the, uh, Down Payment Assistance Program. But in the, in the long run, this can also present an opportunity to buy some properties. Jacob, please.
So I had a question, but I think, um, you just got to the, the answer there. So when you said it could be used for X or it could be used for Y, will your motion be that the, essentially, is this going to be an infusion of funds that the Housing Board can determine a good use for? Okay, all right, then, then I'm on board.
Great. Yes, Rob, please.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in Ms. Comby's input on something, um, with your work on the Housing Board. With your comment earlier, um, about wanting input from the Housing Board of Trustees, but also wanting to move quickly, is this something that you would envision or that we would envision working in parallel with the Housing Board? Or is this something where we would need to let them give feedback first and then perhaps move on it next month or something along those lines?
I think Jacob's question, just the point of clarification around whether or not the Housing Board could use it for either or, that, that satisfies me, yeah.
And I, I'm also, so the Housing Board is one of the ones with two liaisons. So I'm the liaison there as well and had a conversation with Chris. And that's, he, he wanted to be sure that they would have input in, um, in what was kind of ultimately gonna happen with it. And, um, yeah, I think this is in line with what the Housing Board would be looking for. So moving quick is, isn't gonna handcuff them or, or tie them into anything specific than I think, um, moving, you know, sooner than later is.
Um, so.
I have one more question. Um, assuming that the numbers could be updated for today's numbers, so it was a much more modern um, in terms of the AMI, um, just a much more modern, relevant figure, could that be done rather easily? Is it, I would assume it's, it's really a plug.
It is. The, the issue is that in getting it, trying to get it into our budget, um,
Right.
And, um, so, you know, just looking at the, um, just looking at the, the motion, the, the documents that were provided last month, uh, that, that I think you and Jacob had something to do with on the Down Payment Assistance Program. Um, it listed a maximum purchase price for a one-bedroom at 294, 165. That's based on 120% of area median income or AMI. A two-bedroom, 332, 960. A three-bedroom, 371, 755, and a four-bedroom at 402,000.
Right.
This wouldn't buy a lot of properties.
No.
Um, and it, and, and frankly, I don't think it should buy any properties right now, because I think the properties are crazy overpriced right now. Um, and, and the other thing I've noticed, as, as my daughter and son-in-law have gone to town and you make a bid on something, nothing is going for asking price. So you, you just gotta ask, you just gotta put in a bid for $50,000 over asking. So, you've just got to ask, you've just got to put in a bid for $50,000 over asking price. So, I don't think this is the time to implement that part of it, but I don't want to, I want to be able to use these funds in a variety of ways. So, that's, that's my suggestion. And, and the $500,000 was really just meant because I know this is, this is going to be a tough year for some families, so I don't want to overburden them, and I'm trying to balance that with our, meeting our goals of trying to really make Barrington more welcoming and diverse. So, why don't I make the motion, then we can still have discussion after that, but I'll make the motion so that you kind of have a sense of what I'm talking about. I'm going to try to share my screen, so that you can see it too, hopefully that'll... I make a motion that the Barrington Town Council create a revolving loan fund with an allocation of $500,000 in this year's budget, to be used by the Housing Board of Trustees for the preservation of affordable housing in the community, by using those funds to capture affordable housing units in a variety of ways, including, but not limited to, the purchase, deed restriction, and resale of properties in Barrington. Trying to zoom that a little bigger, but...
If it's the creation of a revolving loan fund specifically, does that tie it to having to be loans? And so, for example, the down payment assistance program, I don't believe is a loan.
Actually, we can just call it a revolving fund. So, the purpose here is that if we allocate money, you know, to the Department of Public Works, and it's not used, it goes into the general fund at the end of the year. This idea is to create a revolving, a revolving fund, so that this can stay there, so that if in 2021, we use 50 grand, the rest of it doesn't go into the general fund, we can use the rest later.
So, is that a, I think Kathy called it special fund, a special use fund? Is that the term?
Kathy has a term for it, and...
Special revenue fund?
So, this, Kathy, is a fund that would, a special revenue fund means that at the, if there's money left over at the end of the fiscal year, it remains in that fund for that purpose, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, that's, that was my intent.
And then, another language question, for the preservation of affordable housing, does that mean it could only be used for something that is currently a deed restricted affordable?
Well, I, I kind of, I look at it like, there's affordable small A, which is what all of us think of as affordable, and then affordable capital A, which is sort of the defined term under the Act. Our goal here is to make sure that there is affordable housing in Barrington, we're not, and I'm trying to talk about preserving rather than creating new ones. As Steve Boyagen would point out, for every new affordable one you build, it's really only worth a point one, because you're chasing your tail forever if you keep building affordable, as opposed to capturing existing one.
Yeah, my only concern is it's somebody who wants to limit how it's used, I want to prevent language that could be used to limit how it's used in a way meaningful to the Housing Board of Trustees. That's all, I'm just trying to make sure it wouldn't be.
Mike, or so, do you think this language here is restrictive in the sense that it would limit in any way the housing that could, the...
Now, I actually like the flexibility in there, I think it gives the board more flexibility. So, I think it's expansive as opposed to limiting.
Okay. Not an attorney, so...
Okay, I'm going to take this down, because I can't see anyone else in the public, in case they've... I see one hand up, TR. TR, please.
Sorry to be a pain in the butt, but I'm kind of confused on this issue. Jacob just said something about a fund, and, or a loan. So, is it going to be a loan, or is it money that we're giving people to put a down payment on, and it's not returnable? I'm confused.
Yeah, so, in that context, it was confusing. Loan, loan was really intended for the type of fund. The purpose, which is what I think you're asking about for this, is that we would allocate $500,000 from our budget to be used by the Housing Board of Trustees. They could use it for a loan, but the two major programs that they've already investigated, long ago, you know, six years ago, seven years ago, they looked into a plan to buy and flip houses, that's one. And then the other is by writing a check, basically at a closing, to have, to help folks to buy a house in Barrington, and that would deed restrict the house and help us closer to our goal. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so, I made a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Conway. Any further discussion? Have you seen none? Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Thank you. I have been wanting to do that for six years, so...
Just a question. My budget is going to go in next Monday, but it doesn't have the council's changes to it. So, my preference would be to leave this out of my budget that I give on Monday, and allow the council to make this, add this, as well as whatever other changes they make after our March 22nd meeting. Does that make sense to you? I mean, I don't mind adding it, but I think it'll be clearer that this is a council initiative if I wait.
So, so just to explain to folks, there is a, our charter provides actually for two budgets to come from the municipal side. And it wasn't until four years ago, that we realized that the town council is supposed to, we, for years, it was just the manager submitting a budget. We are required under the charter to submit our own budget. That can be the exact same budget as the managers', but often there's a tweak here or there in the past few years, to add a little money for, I think we created a revolving fund for trails one year, and a couple of other things. So, anyway, I'm perfectly comfortable with that becoming a part of the council's budget, unless everyone would rather go into the manager's budget. Okay? Great, so we have passed that. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, we get back to resolutions, and the first one is the Live United Resolution. And I think Counselor Conway, you wanted to be heard on this?
Yes, I, actually, I was going to withdraw the resolution. I've done a little bit more research since this first came to our attention, and it is, the Live United is part of the United Way's strategic plan to build racial equity in Rhode Island, and it's, I believe very strongly in supporting the effort of Live United, and that our town is working towards doing exactly that, and creating racial equities, both through our diversity consultant, as well as the motion that, or the, what we just passed in terms of the creating of the housing fund. But this specific pledge is more based around organizational and corporation and individual. So, I have signed the pledge myself as an individual, and I would suggest that as many folks as possible could sign it as an individual, but I do, I do believe that it's not necessarily a municipality resolution, so that's, that was my feeling on it.
Okay. So, you're encouraging, you know, all the folks who are listening to sign as individuals?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, does anyone else want to be heard on that? Okay, okay, so we can move on to the next one. The next one is from, this is a resolution proposed by Counselor Breyer and Counselor Costello regarding climate bills that are in the General Assembly. And maybe you want to just kind of take us through that? Oh, oh, before we do that, Vice President Humm, I believe, has to recuse on this one.
Yep, I just have to recuse, so I'm going to turn my screen off.
Okay, thanks. One of you, I should just, I should state that I, I think that I'm going to abstain on this one, only because I think it's a complicated issue, and I haven't had, I read the bills, but I haven't had a chance to read any studies that might talk about the impacts, in terms of economic impacts and so on. So, I just, I don't know that it's a, it looks like a good thing we just passed something like this in Barrington, our resolution from the Energy Committee, but I just wanted to give you a chance to, to lay out what you thought was positive about these.
All right, Paul, would you like to, or would you like me to take it? I will, go ahead. So, there are three main purposes of the Act on Climate Bills. One is for a faster emissions reduction. In 2014, the General Assembly passed resolutions to get to carbon neutral by 2050, and so this, actually, it was by 2060. This accelerates the timeline to 2050. It provides for accountability and transparency in how the state will go about reducing the emissions, and it adds a focus and emphasis on job creation in the clean energy sector. And so, that's why I thought we should put our support behind it, it aligns well, and I shared it with the Chair of the, not conservation, the Resilience in Energy Committee, and she was supportive of it as well.
Anybody else?
I think Counselor Costello had his hand up. Does he need to speak before I speak?
I yield the floor. To you, I certainly yield the floor.
Oh, well, too kind, thank you so much. I ask for passage of this resolution. The Senate is going to be taking up in committee a vote on this this week, is going to pass out of committee and onto the Senate floor. This bill basically is the foundation for Rhode Island for accountability, to move, it's, it's the umbrella bill that all the other bills will align in. It's the one that sets the goals, because it gives enough flexibility for Rhode Island to choose the path in which to obtain these goals. If we don't have goals, we're never going to achieve. So, this, all of these provisions in this bill came from Resilient Rhodey, from down in, back in 2014. This bill has been through the House and the Senate for years, it is a really good bill, it's now included justice, climate justice has been included in this year's bill, it aligns with some of the things you all have been talking about this evening. I really would like to see my hometown support this. I think it's important that the towns get behind it. Ultimately, you're going to be partly responsible with all of us in providing a better future for our children and our grandchildren. If we don't start now, obtaining these goals, our kids aren't going to have a planet to live on. So, all these great things about housing aren't going to matter, because we're going to have sea rise that makes a lot of these houses uninhabitable. So, the time is now, and it's a great bill, and I move passage. Thank you.
Thank you. I should also note that our, one of our representatives, Jason Knight, is a co-sponsor of this bill. Anybody else? Paul, please.
Yeah, first thing I would mention is that it gets us in line with international standards, we can go to net zero by 2050. We as a state have to take our responsibility in this, and we of all states should be taking up the mantle of this mission, given that we're surrounded by a 20 mile house of coastline. And beyond that, the, it gets us in line with other states that are moving forward as well with the exact same standards. It is also endorsed by the conservation, the highly respected legal environmental advocacy organization with some of the top environmental lawyers in New England, and we also have the endorsement of the Audubon Society, so we're not talking about a radical piece of environmental legislation at all. Beyond that, on the enforcement mechanisms, it's important to note that those are targets for 2030, and there is some legal enforcement that is available, there's a cause of action created by, by the statute, but the legislature can change those targets if we're not approaching those standards, and, and if something unforeseen happens with regard to the development, or a disappointed development in new energy and green energy technologies. So, there is some flexibility there, but we, if we're serious about these goals, we have to start adopting these pieces of legislation. And when you see towns across Rhode Island, starting with us, taking this kind of action, it sends a message to our legislature and our incoming governor that we intend to do so.
Anyone else from the council? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution as drafted.
A second.
Motion is made by Counselor Breyer, seconded by Counselor Costello. Counselor Breyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I abstain, and there is one recusal, the motion carries three to one to one. So, thank you. So, the motion carries, and we will...
Three, three...
Three to zero to one to one.
Three, three, oh, to one.
Yes, you're right, three to zero to one to one. Right, so there's no opposed, nobody opposed. The next item is a resolution to prevent discrimination against lawful sources of income, and this is, this is something that Barrington leads the way. Counselor Breyer introduced this as an ordinance, and we passed this two months ago, something like that, and the state is now looking at something similar. Counselor Breyer, please, or Counselor Conway, both are on this.
I'll go. Yeah, interesting kind of cycle on this is, so when I presented this a few months ago, or first started working on it, it was with also, not quite yet, Counselor Conway. In her role on the housing board, we worked on it, and meeting with somebody who had been involved in Providence proposing an ordinance, they got a little sidetracked, but using their information, we passed it here, and then in passing it in Barrington, that gave a counselor in Providence leverage, and it has now passed in Providence. And so, it is nice to see municipalities can work together, and then now this can filter up to the state as well, and they're looking to pass the same, effectively the same law that we just passed, and so, I'm hopeful it'll pass, it has a good number of sponsors, and I think it should go forward, but certainly giving it support always helps.
All right. I'm not seeing anyone from the audience who, oh, Paul Dolcinos would like to be heard on this one. on this one.
Yeah, I just had a question. I'm all for treating income as income. The question is, where's the, how does the individual prove or show, do they still have it, demonstrate proof of that income, actually verify that it's there? I mean, a letter showing that they have this award, or they have this alimony, or they have this, because, you know, just looking out for protecting for landlords as well, you know?
Sure, if you want to answer that.
Yeah, I, I don't know what mechanisms are in place to protect against that, but the law is protecting for qualified income, any income that is lawful. And so if you can't prove income, then it's, you're not proving you have lawful income either. And mostly it's for the protection of housing vouchers, alimony, which would have a court order associated with it, and things of that nature. So there is a paper trail to all the lawful sources of income.
Right. So one of the things, Paul, is that you would have to show, you know, a landlord could require you to show some income, but there are landlords who would say, I don't take Section 8 housing vouchers. And they might do so for a variety of reasons. One of the reasons being that by doing that, there's actually an inspection to make sure that their property is in, up to code, and one would hope their property is up to code. But you'd still have to prove some form of income, and it would have to be lawful. Not seeing any other hands raised. Does Counselor Conway or Counselor Breyer want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution as drafted.
A second.
A motion made by Counselor Breyer, seconded by Counselor Conway. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries. We already dealt with events, and just so you know, we're going to try and get that around as quickly as we can, because that's one, sometimes we do them where it's just a, I just sign them just because it's simpler. In this case, I'd like to have her have the whole council see this with a big seal and everything. So we're going to try and get it around for events as quickly as we can.
And President Carroll, just so everyone on this meeting knows, the parade is scheduled for Sunday, March 21st, at 2:00 PM. We'll meet at the Barrington Middle School parking lot, and then parade over to Atria from there. So please get it on your schedules, and we'll, we'll be trying to advertise it and get as many people as possible to attend.
Next item is the resolution supporting the Autism Awareness Flag. This is Counselor Castell and Counselor Conway. Would one of you like to take us through that?
Sure. We have a diverse, talented, and powerful group of individuals in town and in every town, that over time has not been fully integrated into our society, and it's our loss, more, more than in the loss of the ASD community. I was approached in the last month by the, by, by two powerful advocates, Jack Siegel and Karen Rasnick, who are, are asking for us to make, to, to put, set forth this resolution, recognizing the contributions and the enriching nature of the community to our community, and encouraging all of us to learn about and, and adapt our, our approach to make sure that they are fully members of our community. We have, we have to definitely improve on our, on the welcoming nature of the town. I realize it's symbolic measure, but I think it's an important measure. I will note that my internet apparently is somewhat glitchy, and if I'm not coming through, then I would invite Counselor Conway to do so. And if it is, if it is more appropriate and easier for her to read the resolution or for President Carroll, then I would also encourage that to happen as well. But I want to thank Jack Siegel and Karen Rasnick for bringing this to my attention. I've, I've learned through working with them, and I'm, and I am grateful for their contributions.
Carol, Counselor Castell, you were coming through loud and clear right there, so thank you. I would also like to add that as part of our DEI session, the most, one of our most recent sessions, one participant mentioned neurodiversity as a really important element of diversity, which I agree with. The importance of recognizing that people interpret the world in a different way and bring a different perspective is really important. So when Karen reached out and asked for a sponsor, I was happy to sponsor this, this flag raising.
I'd like to mention just one more thing. The resolution was put in your typical whereas and, and there here to for format, the words, the sentiments are of these two powerful advocates, and I just want people, before they hear the resolution, to know this came from them. These are their words.
Would one of you like to read it, or would you prefer if I read it?
Whoever has the best.
Now he's glitchy. I'm happy to, President Carroll, if you want me to.
That was a very timely glitch.
Okay, do you want me to read it?
Sure. Yeah, I'm worried mine is glitchy now.
Resolution to Barrington Town Council to fly the Autism Awareness Flag during Autism Awareness Month. Whereas autism or autism spectrum disorder, ASD, refers to a broad range of conditions characterized by challenges with social skills, repetitive behaviors, speech and nonverbal communication, and whereas autism affects people of every age, ethnic group, and gender, including an estimated one in 54 children in the United States today, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And whereas neurodiversity is a concept that is often overlooked, and whereas ASD individuals are people of diverse abilities who can thrive when provided with a proper platform and who have the same feelings, hopes, and needs as non-ASD individuals, and whereas it is important to promote public awareness of and education about autism in order for the town of Barrington to fully include and benefit from the contributions of members of our community who've been affected by autism. And now therefore be it resolved that the town of Barrington honors Autism Awareness Month, stands in solidarity with all ASD individuals in our community, and encourages all Barrington residents, visitors, and organizations to educate themselves about and make efforts to fully include ASD individuals, and be it further resolved that Autism Awareness Flag shall be flown on the Town Hall flagpole from April 1st through and including April 30th of this year, adopted by the town, by the Barrington Town Council on March 1st, 2021. I will, can I take that as a motion from Counselor Conway to pass that resolution, and a second from Counselor Castell?
Yes.
Okay. Vice President Humm, do you have something to say on that? Yes.
I do. So I, I did want to make a comment. So I, I agree with the substance of every single thing that's said within that resolution. I think autism awareness is very important. I think it's something that's prevalent in our society, in our town, and I think it often gets overlooked, doesn't necessarily get the support. I think that it should, and I think it's, it's a really important thing. I disagree that we should put a flag up for it. I think putting the flag should be far and away the exception and not the rule. I'm afraid of the flagpole becoming some sort of revolving door of flags going up and down. I, I, I don't know if that's appropriate. I think the town should show its express support for autism awareness in a different way. And again, I do want to reiterate, I think it's a very important issue. I just don't think that the flagpole is the place to show the support.
Counselor Breyer?
So I, echoing, echoing that, too often, neurodiversity is a topic that's left unaddressed. And I'm happy to support a resolution that promotes awareness and encourages us all to be more mindful, to be more inclusive, and hopefully it can motivate the town to look at anything we can do programmatically to better serve families impacted by autism spectrum disorder. And then raising a flag isn't the only way that we can make a statement, and the application process we have inevitably forces us to choose between one cause and another cause. And I don't think that's a position we should be in, so I'd encourage us to find ways to recognize groups, communities, issues, and causes that's separate from raising a flag. And I think there's a powerful way that we can do this and participate in Autism Awareness Month, and it's the, the means of participating in Autism Awareness Month. It's promoted by Autism Speaks and was part of the application, the flag application that was sent to us. And so I'd make a motion to amend the final clause of the resolution to read, resolve that the spotlights shining on the front facade of Barrington Town Hall shall be tinted blue, illuminating the building consistent with the Autism Speaks Lighted Up Blue Campaign during the month of April.
And where would the funding come from that? Are you proposing it?
So the, the cost would be in the range of $50 to get the, the gels that would go over the spotlights. If, if the funding for purchasing that has to be included, I would say the Council Contingency Fund.
So we've got a motion and a second, but we'll, we've got at least one change, and I have a proposal too. My proposal would be to fly the flag for April with the exception of the date for the, Jim, I'm forgetting, the Armenian genocide date. I don't know what date that is. The 24th? With the exception of the 24th, when we fly the, the flag in, in recognition of the Armenian genocide. Does anyone object to that one day?
I do not object to that one day. I do object to replacing the flag request, with a light them up blue request. I would also note that we, yes, we can take symbolic measures, and we can take real measures as well in terms of integrating people in the community. I don't think that, that we can pass the flag resolution we passed last month, and yet suddenly say, well, now we just have to take physical action or actual tangible steps forward, especially when members of a disenfranchised, marginalized community step forward with a valid claim and to, to integration and inclusion. We should be taking steps to include everyone in this community who has been disenfranchised, particularly people of neurodiversity. I don't understand how a symbolic measure for one disenfranchised group is, is inappropriate, and yet is appropriate for others. And so I would like a clean, a clean vote on this, on this motion and this resolution in the sense that I'm willing to make the exception suggested by President Carroll, but I would rather not see an amended version suggested by Counselor Breyer voted on as if it were the original. We have a second on, on my motion, and I'd like that entertained.
I'd like to clarify, at no point did I suggest not taking a symbolic measure and one that generates awareness. I'm just, I'm simply suggesting an alternative to raising a flag and instead lighting up Town Hall blue, which is unique to this cause and also far more visible than raising a flag, and met with less controversy.
So Counselor Castell, will you accept that as a modification to your motion?
I do not.
Okay.
I think this should be a separate, that's a separate measure, it's not even a flag request. We should be voting strictly on the flag. If that is a separate effort, I, I can entertain that, but I, but I would like the resolution as drafted, with Mr. Carroll's exception included, voted on.
Okay, so you'll accept that, that change that for the 24th, we would fly the flag in recognition of Armenian genocide day?
I would do that provided Counselor Conway would agree to it.
Would you agree to that change, Counselor Conway?
I will.
Okay. So motion's been made, amended and seconded. Any further discussion on this motion? Yes?
Yeah, I think, I think only to say, I do agree with what Jacob said about this being a different type of express support. I, I would support Jacob's idea. I think it's actually a really good idea. It's a, it's thinking outside the box to show the support in a different way, other than just talking about flags and putting something up on a flagpole. You know, the, the one comment I'll make is, in, in terms of awareness, this one in particular is autism awareness, and focusing on the terms, is the, you know, what, what would make that awareness a, a little bit more apparent? Would it be putting it up on a flagpole, which as somebody drives through town, quite frankly, you can't even see. If I, we're driving through, you kind of have to distort your body to even see the flag up there. It's typically blocked by the trees and I think very difficult to see anyway. Or I think Jacob's idea of the lights is actually a good one, because it is something that in the evenings for that month, you see the blue lights. It's something that you see other forms of government do in terms of putting up different lights for, you know, whatever different causes it might be. But it's something that I think is more impactful if this is some, if, if we truly want to show this as, as something to have an impact for awareness in particular, I, I think what Jacob recommended is probably has a bigger impact in terms of awareness.
President Carroll, I would question why Counselor Breyer and Vice President Hum are making this an either/or choice. I didn't make it an either/or choice.
I, I made the motion as an either/or choice. I made a, a motion to change it.
Let me get to Counselor Conway. You had your hand raised.
That's fine. Carroll asked the question.
I think it's, Rob had the question.
And I, I just wanted, I don't have a question, I just wanted to answer Mr. Castell's question. I don't know if I intended to be an either/or choice. I support that as something to show the awareness, because I, I don't support putting something on the flagpole for it. So that's just, that's just my viewpoint.
Mr. Siegel would like to be heard. Mr. Siegel, please.
First of all, as, as one of the people who helped write this, I, I want to recognize Mr. Castell as being an extreme, extreme advocate for this. He went out of his way to make sure this happened, and everybody in the town should know that there's somebody who really cares. I also want to thank Counselor Conway for, for her sponsorship, and I know she spoke with Karen a lot more. The reason why we want the flag is because we want the same amount of recognition in diversity, equity, and awareness as other disenfranchised people in this town. We want, we want the same neurodiversity to be added to all diversity training in this town, and the equity measures, all the other actions that have been taken in this town to recognize other people who are disenfranchised should be applied to neurodiverse people. This includes training for numerous boards in town, the police, and, and even maybe the town council. You know, it's, 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 this is once again othering people with autism. It would be great if you lit up, lit up the, the town, but, but once again, that's kind of setting it apart, instead of kind of saying, well, this is kind of the same as all other diversity. This is a diversity of diversity, I would say. And I, I would like to see the flag personally, and I think it's great to have the Armenian flag. I think it's great to have any other flag up there. Of course, I have all sorts of respect for the veterans and the American flag, and if there were no flag, that would be fine. If there were no flag, that, that would be fine. But if you're going to put up a flag for other diverse causes and to celebrate diversity, this deserves just as much an equal treatment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Paul Dolcinos, Colonel, please.
Yeah, just a point of order. As much as I appreciate the showing of the, for the Armenian genocide, technically that would be in violation of the flag code, because you cannot fly to sovereign states from the. technically that would be in violation of the flag code, because you cannot fly two sovereign states from the same pole. So and actually, we have been in violation of showing the Armenian flag in the past. We really need a second pole if you're going to do that, because they have to be of equal height of two foreign countries. And you know, that's just a point of order.
Okay, we'll see if we can find a flag that recognizes the Armenian genocide without being the official, current official flag. Ms. Rosnick, please.
Oh, there we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, great. Well, I just want to thank Counsel Conway and Castell for sponsoring this measure. My daughter is 28 years old and this has been an issue that has been, that we've been living with for our whole lives. And Rachel is a productive member of the society. She's voted in every single election she could since she's 16. We, 18, 18, I'm nervous. I want to thank Josh Bickford for listening last week and writing an article supporting this. We have support of so many organizations that have, and hundreds and hundreds of people on Facebook to raise this flag. Mark Hefner, who is a friend and peer of Rachel's, has started the Barrington Business Blast on Facebook and Instagram. He also is on the Spectrum. And he wrote an article about her. I would advise everybody to like his Facebook page and Instagram and start supporting that as he's supporting Barrington businesses. I have the support of Special Olympics Rhode Island, Bailey's Team for Autism Looking Upwards, the Women in Business Enterprise of Rhode Island, various autism groups, the Art Collaborative in Warren, where Rachel is exhibiting her artwork. And I have hundreds and hundreds of people who would sign the petition in this town. So I know that the town really supports this issue. And I have friends who said that they would go to door to door and sign petitions to have the flag raised. It's, there are so many people in this town who are on the Spectrum and our voices, their voices need to be heard through us. They need the support through us, because they can't voice their own. So I would really thank you very much for making this gesture just to support all the people in this community and the entire state and world who are on the Spectrum. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosnick. I want to correct you slightly. His name is Matt Hefner, and I know Matt does the Barrington Business Blast, and he's also a fellow Holy Cross alum, so we'll make sure he gets proper credit.
Oh, his brother is Mark.
Yes.
So Mark is Rachel's friend.
So, okay. No more hands? Oh, Counsel Breyer.
I just want to clarify that my motion to change the way we recognize is in no way not recognizing the community, not supporting the diverse nature of our town and not undermining in any way what families and people with autism go through and what we should be doing to include all of the things Mr. Segal said that he wants to see in the town, I agree with. But I have concern that every cause that we find of merit needing a flag is going to lead to a situation that's completely untenable. And so I think what we should be doing is rather than saying this cause gets a flag and this cause does not get a flag, is we should look at requests and say, what is the way to honor this group, this community or this cause that's appropriate for the situation? Different does not mean unequal. And lighting up Town Hall is aligned with what Autism Speaks, what their national campaign is pushing for communities to do. And nothing on their site has to do with the flag. That's just something we've done in town for some groups. And I think instead of doing what we've done for some groups, we should look at what's the right thing for each. And that's why I think that lighting up Town Hall is more appropriate than a flag.
Okay. TR would like to be heard on this topic.
Hello again. Seeing since you guys passed this flag policy last month, all of a sudden, it seems like Mr. Breyer doesn't want to raise a flag, unless it's one of his own that he comes up with. So at this point, you guys need to come up with a better policy on flag raising. Mr. Castell has a great opportunity to advise or to display the autism and get everybody involved. And all of a sudden, it's not comfortable for Mr. Breyer to raise a flag. So you either got to go with the flag or against the flags. You can't go in the middle. So you guys need to straighten that out and just vote with Mr. Castell on his flag policy that was, or his flag that was presented to be raised. Larry, it's just that you guys can't make a decision. Do it.
Okay. Thank you, TR. I kind of wanted to respond to that, just because I, I'm not happy with people saying that because you want to raise the Black Lives Matter flag, you're categorized in this way, or because you don't want to raise it, you're categorized in this way. We can support something and not support raising a particular flag. I think it's a perfectly reasonable position for people to take, that they don't want to raise a flag at all. I think that's fine. I disagree with it. I don't think that makes us enemies. So I just, I don't have any problem with people disagreeing on things. And I think if they want to clarify that their views, that while they believe in this issue, they don't think that we should be flying flags, that's fine. It's just a question of trying to understand each other. And I think we're all trying to do that. Counsel Castell.
Let me speak to the idea that it's not about just any cause we support. At least, that's not how I analyze it. I see this as, we have the American flag that stands for American values, including freedom and equality and liberty in the Bill of Rights. But we also have times when, in this town and in this country, certain individuals, certain groups have not lived and been able to live the promise of American values in practice. This initiative is designed to reach out to people so that they know they're welcome here, so that they can live that reality, the reality of what the American flag stands for in principle, and so that they can live it. So it's not just any cause. I might support healthcare for everyone. That doesn't mean I'm going to put a flag up for it. It's about people who live here, who are in marginalized communities, who desire recognition, come forward asking for that. And that we should stand in solidarity with those people, I think is self-evident. The other group I would suggest would be people who make sacrifices to support those same American principles and values. It's about people and it's about living our values in practice. It's not for just any cause. This is a particularly important cause.
Dr. Daft, please.
Hey, I just wanted to say that I was at the meeting when this council unanimously voted for that flag policy. And I can't even believe that this conversation has gone on that long about the Autism Awareness Flag. I mean, are you saying that you're only going to fly two or three flags in the whole year? I mean, I can't think of a better cause than the Autism Awareness Flag. It goes with the same other flags that you have chosen to fly. And I can't even believe that there's any discussion as to, you know, if you're going to put some flags up, what causes are you really going to even deem worthy? I just, I can't believe that you would have a unanimous policy that now this is taking this long to go ahead and decide if Autism Awareness, and I agree 100% with you, Mr. Castell, that of all the things, this one ties in more than anything. And as far as the flags, you're going to keep getting requests, because that's how people feel. I mean, you can't expect people to just let you fly a few flags. Everyone has things that are important to them. But I mean, I personally, you know, am against flying any flags there. I think that there's been a lot of talk for the last six months about flags, but I don't really see the town or the town council doing anything to really promote inclusivity. Where are the events? Where's something for Black History Month? There's all kinds of things that could be done, you know, within the COVID guidelines or even moving forward. I believe that, you know, actions speak louder than gestures and words. And I feel that there's so many things that could be being done. I like the policy, I like the idea of the blue lights. I think you could see that better. But that's only if you're not going to fly any other flags. I mean, it's either, I'm not saying that has to be one or the other, but it's very wishy-washy. And I just, if you're not going to fly the Autism Awareness Flag, I really don't know what other cause you would ever even choose is worthy. I'm very shocked, to be honest with you, that this conversation has lasted this long. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a motion, and it was seconded. Unless the members of the council have further discussion, where I think we're ready.
President Carroll, we do have one member of the public that hasn't spoken, that's had his hand raised for a while, David Scapino.
I believe he's from Bristol, so we're just, this is only for members of Barrington. So Counsel Breyer, please.
I just want to add what Counsel Castell said at the end, and he had alluded to a little while ago when we spoke, a framework that he has. And that's when I heard what that framework is, and I think it's strong and it was very appealing. And I'm still a bit torn on where I'm going to fall, because then what Dr. Daft followed with really emphasized the struggle that I'm having supporting an additional flag, and that's that everybody has a cause that's important to them. And there are causes and communities that will be in conflict if we approve a flag when there are other ways to recognize a group.
Oh, my God.
Can you please mute yourself? Thank you. And what I found is the, I lost my train of thought now. We received a request that conflicts directly with this one, to recognize a community that's extremely important to me. And if I had chosen to sponsor that, we would have to choose between two flags during the month of April. And I chose not to, because I didn't think it was a flag that should fly, even though it's a community that's certainly worthy of it. And so it's a struggle. We have this policy in place so that we can find a way to recognize groups when the flag is the appropriate thing. And it's hard to say when it is and when it isn't, and that's, we make hard decisions. But it can't be boiled down to as simple as you support a group or you don't, because that's not at all what this is.
Okay, I agree. Are we ready to vote? Vice President Ham, please.
Sorry to drag this on. I just wanted to say one more thing, because I agree with so much of what has been said. I think, Mr. Carroll, what you said about it not necessarily being fair, that if somebody supports the flag policy and then doesn't support a particular flag, I agree. I think you can do both things. I think that's perfectly reasonable. I came into tonight very, I came into tonight thinking one way. And I summarized my thoughts. I summarized, I think, exactly where I stood and generally where I stand. But I think tonight shows to me the importance of public engagement and continued public engagement, and that's why we have public engagement. I think Mr. Castell gave an excellent presentation in terms of his thought process and how he views things, and maybe necessarily something I hadn't thought of it that way before. So what I wanted to comment is, that's why I appreciate this process. I think it conflicted too, but I think for a lot of reasons that Mr. Breyer has mentioned. But I might be thinking now a little bit differently than I thought at the beginning of this discussion. So I just wanted to comment that. I wanted to thank everybody for their public engagement, and I'm glad that we have it. I'm glad that this is why we do it. So I'll stop there and we can move forward.
So we will now vote on the motion which was made and seconded. Vice President Ham, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counsel Conway?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries. Thank you. The next items on our agenda are to discuss and act on bids, and the first one is from our taxes, our new tax assessor, Ken, to talk to us about Northeast Revaluation. Please, Ken. Oh, you're on mute, sir. You're on mute, yeah. There you go.
President Carroll, honorable members of the town council, I am here to ask that you enact one of the options that were in the original RFP, the original agreement, and that was to have a secondary look by a licensed appraiser to look at, and in this case, we are asking for the top 50 residential properties. Typically, when we go through the reevaluation process and when you engage an appraiser, it's because you're being sued. In this case, we are not doing that. We're trying to circumvent that, be in front of it. I know that former, the former revals that were done in the town, they viewed more properties, and it was because of the taxpayer group that actually asked for that. We feel that doing the top 50 residential properties is the way to go. Also, including the commercial properties, I don't think would be, I think it's cost prohibitive. I think you're not spending money in the right place. We need to protect our taxpayers. This is a consolidation. So what it does is it brings in a licensed appraiser to look at the values as they are being set by the reevaluation company, so that before the taxpayer gets it, it's already had a second or a third set of eyes looking at it to make sure that those values are fair. This is a lot less than the actual options that were listed in the original agreement with Northeast Revaluation. They are going down from $66,000 to the $17,500, based on our scope, that we've reduced the scope. So I'd appreciate it if you would approve this for us tonight, so we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any member of the council have a question? Does anyone want to, yes, Counsel Breyer?
A question that was also surfaced by somebody in the community who reached out to me about the revaluation company, and it was wondering if our former tax assessor is involved in the process.
He is.
Can I answer that, please? I have a piece of correspondence from the president of that firm. It is their practice that any former tax assessor not ever be involved with their former municipality. So our former tax assessor has had absolutely nothing to do with this.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And I will support that, because I know firsthand of several other assessors that have gone to work for that company, and none of them have been allowed to work for their former municipality.
Any other questions, concerns? Does anyone want to make the, let's see, motion to approve the option for Northeast Revaluation Group to conduct narrative appraisals of the 50 highest, I believe it's 50, 50 high value residential properties in the amount of $17,500. I'll make that motion. Does anyone second it?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counsel Conway. Any further discussion? Vice President Ham, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counsel Conway?
Aye.
Counsel Castell? Counselor Castell.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That motion carries. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Uh next item is our DPW, uh a logging truck with custom dump body and crane. Uh and Alan, if you could take us through that one, please.
Sure. This this is to um replace an existing unit we have that's over 20 years old. Um last month, we went to bid and advertised and sent the bids to uh local vendors that supply these types of vehicles. Um we received two bids and the lowest bid didn't meet specifications. So we're recommending Anderson Motors out of East Providence for $239,952. And that's including the trade in of our existing unit. Um we've had good luck. The previous unit is 20 years old and it was also from Anderson Motors um purchased by the town, I believe in 1999. Um so um it's it's a critical piece of equipment. It's used for um carrying large logs and um storm debris. It's critical during hurricanes, uh storm cleanup. And uh therefore, it was actually approved by the Planning Board in the capital budget. So that's therefore, we're recommending approval.
Okay, quick question. You said that uh the Freightliner bid didn't meet uh some of the bid specifications. Can you recall some of those?
Yes, I can. Um the warranty, it it didn't have um the mileage that um was required. The cab construction wasn't um steel. Um there was no driver's airbag. Uh there was smaller um, the diesel tank and the air compressor, the hydraulics are smaller. The um the oil pan was constructed of plastic. Um the PTO, which is the powered uh takeoff pump, which controls the hydraulics, uh was a flange type, and we had asked for a um, it it's more of a spindle type, which is a stronger type of a unit. Um no LED lights. There were a few other things and um they weren't responsive.
Okay. Thank you. That that makes sense. Easier to provide a lower price if you cut everything from the uh requested bid. Uh any questions or concerns from the council? Okay. Um I will make a motion motion to approve the purchase of a 2022 logging truck with custom body crane in the amount of $239,952 from Anderson Motors. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Vice President Hum. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Brier.
Aye.
Counselor Conway.
Aye.
Counselor Castell. And I also vote aye. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Sure. Next item is uh from the Finance Department. This is for our annual audit. Uh Kathy, can you take us through that, please?
Evening, counselors. The town of Barrington prepared and advertised and ordered RFP. Two bids were submitted. After having a conversation with the town solicitor, one of the bids needed to be rejected for noncompliance with the RFP. The technical and the cost proposal and the required paperwork was then sent to the auditor general for approval. The auditor auditor general approved Bacon and Company. So I request the town council to select Bacon and Company for um the audit bid going forward.
Okay, for $182,250. Any questions from the council? Yes, Counselor Brier.
So I I know in the past with much um much smaller bid amounts, um Jimmy, you've been uncomfortable when we've only had one bidder. Are you confident that we don't need to put this back out to get more competitive bids?
Yes, I I am. First of all, Bacon and Company has been doing it for the last three years and has done a tremendous job for us. And them having the background helps an awful lot. And there's there's not a whole lot of municipal audit firms out there that are willing. So I'm not sure putting out another RFP would bring us anything different than what we did before us tonight.
Any other questions or concerns? Uh I'll make a motion to approve the bid for three years of audit services to Bacon and Company in the amount of $182,250 for 2021, 2022, and 2023. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Castell. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh Counselor Brier.
Aye.
Counselor Conway.
Aye.
Counselor Castell.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Uh and then the next bid is for the Police Department. This is for a 2021 uh vehicle, equipment. Um Chief, can you take us through that, please?
Uh thank you, President Carroll. On uh January 27th, we put out a bid in the local papers and we reached out to uh every vendor we know that does transfer of uh police vehicle equipment. We have two 2021 police SUVs coming in this year, and we're going to need to outfit them and have the installation of the equipment. So every year, we reach out to the vendors, like I said, and we got three bids back. And the lowest bid comes out of Adamson Industries for $9,516 per vehicle for a total of $19,032, not to exceed that amount in order to uh installation of new equipment in our new vehicles. Uh we've been trying to get, uh to be quite honest with you, some local, a little more local vendors coming in, but they don't come anywhere close to the $9,516. And that closest one was about $2,200 more, uh out of Hobbit. And Marlboro, Mass., in the past, they're they're way off. So I prefer, even if it were $500 or $600 more, maybe go with a closer vendor, but yet it's just the 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 vary the the variation in the bids, I would still recommend the lowest bid to Adamson Industries for a total amount of $19,032, not to exceed that amount for two vehicle installation, transfer of equipment. And that would come out of the capital auto replacement account, CR 2.5 thousand, uh point 1,000, capital reserve account, I should say.
Uh Chief, in the past, um we've been able to, as we we get a new Explorer, uh move the equipment from the old Explorer into that new Explorer. But then I know that when they change the model size, it it no longer fits some of that equipment. Is this is this related to that, a change? Or is this just just getting rid of old equipment?
This is related to that. Uh I think after this, these two, we should be in good shape. And I think the transfer of equipment will start to fit the new vehicles again. But it isn't that, it it's it's not that bad because some of the equipment we're not going to use is getting old anyway. And we're using those two vehicles that are being replaced for uh what we call the detailed cars.
Yep.
And believe it or not, uh most of the times during the months of April, May, June, July, August, and September, we don't have enough spare cars to use on these road and traffic details. And we do get $25 an hour for them. And last I looked, we're averaging about $45,000 a year just in money we're receiving on those vehicles. So that equipment will stay on the cars that are being replaced and they'll be using a detail that we need the equipment for anyway. So it's 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 working out right now anyway by saving that equipment and not transferring it. What would happen in the past, we transfer that equipment. Now we have a a police vehicle with nothing. It's stripped. We can't use that on the details. And years ago, that wasn't an issue. We didn't have many. I don't know what it is or how it's changed, but like I said, on most warm summer days now, we'll have anywhere request for by companies to have four or five police vehicles on the private details. And they're paying $25 for that car. And like I said, and that where I'm anywhere from $25,000 to $55,000 a year on that, on those detailed cars coming in from private vendors.
That's great. Uh any questions for the chief? Uh yes. Vice President Hum.
Hey, Chief, I I just wanted to make a comment. I know we're talking equipment and not vehicles. Um we've been talking in the past about uh exploring um Teslas. I wanted to pass along, I talked to my daughter, who's seven years old, and uh she said you should really look into it because you can really sneak up on the bad guys. It'll be so quiet. So if you could add that to your consideration, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah. I have been approached by uh the gentleman that President Carroll, I think, mentioned at the last council meeting. The only reservation I would have is is uh, I don't know if they have a a vehicle that would uh, the SUVs are kind of nice with the equipment and it and the things we do carry on the road. And and we gotten away from the uh normal patrol vehicle because of size and the equipment that we carry, it's tough to get them in some of the trunks. And and the SUVs have worked out well, especially in the snow and bad weather.
Yeah. The town is down against the ability to sneak up on bad guys.
Yeah, and you know, those those days are going south, so.
Tesla has an SUV.
What was that?
Tesla has an SUV also.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. If they have an SUV, I don't know if they're going to have police packages or how that's going to work. But you have to remember, these police packages have uh oil coolers. They have um a lot of things that are made differently than the passenger vehicle you and I purchased because they idle so so much. So you know, we have to look in. I don't know if we're talking about buying just the regular Tesla car or is that a police package? No.
Not Model S. I think he's talking about Model 3, which is a uh an SUV. But I I think I think you guys ought to thoroughly drive that around before, you know, for free when they offer it to you.
Right.
Or you decide.
Thank you.
I I will, unless there's another question or concern, I'll I'll make the motion to award a bid for installation and transfer of equip equipment into two newly purchased vehicles in the amount of $19,032 to Adamson Industries Corporation. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Vice President Hum. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh Counselor Brier.
Aye.
Counselor Conway.
Aye.
Counselor Castell.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is to introduce two two ordinances. The first one is an ordinance amendment to Chapter 185, uh Article 17 Signs, 18596, permitted signs in open space in residence districts. Before, this is Counselor Brier, but before we get to that, I'm just going to ask, uh I think we have, Mike, we have to refer this to the Planning Board uh for a uh non-bid.
Advisory, right. So because it's a um amendment to the zoning ordinance, you need to um refer it to the Planning Board. They'll take a look at it. They'll have comments um on their own. Then they'll come back to you before the public hearing. Uh my understanding is the Planning Board meeting, it's too late to be placed on the March Planning Board meeting, which means it has to go on the April Planning Board meeting. So my recommendation is that you would set the public hearing for this at the May 3rd meeting.
So uh Jacob, do you want to make that motion?
I, let me just find the language here. Uh to introduce ordinance 2021 dash 3, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 185, Article 17, right, seven, yeah, 17 Signs, 185 dash 96, permitted signs in open space in residence districts as presented with referral to the zoning board.
Uh the planning board.
Sorry, with referral to the planning board and op and schedule an open hearing for our May 3rd council meeting.
Schedule a public hearing, right.
Yes.
Uh second, I will second that.
Mary, Mary is waving.
Oh, yes, Mary.
Mike, Arcello, doesn't that need to be advertised for three weeks?
Right, but we'll have three weeks between now and May 3rd.
No, but usually it's inside the motion.
Oh.
Well, uh well, the, I I don't technically, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. Um so I've made a motion, uh Jacob made the motion I've seconded. Any further discussion? Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh Counselor Brier. Counselor Conway. Counselor Castell. And I also vote aye. That motion carries. Uh next one is an ordinance amendment to Chapter 184, excuse me, 140 flag policy. Um is Jim has already noted that the um that they, actually, it's the president of the US. According to the flag code, it's the President of the US, the governor, and apparently the mayor of District Columbia that can order the flag lowered to half staff. So that part, um I this, I noticed Jacob's motion. I I I just um normally, we just do this and then we just introduce them and then we we have the public hearing. Uh a public hearing, I'm imagining would take quite a while. And and I just um, I get, actually, I I I wondered if we could kind of talk about the concerns that you have that you wanted to address. Maybe we don't need to amend the ordinance for it.
So um so two pieces. One on um the section that Jim noted was, uh I spoke with the solicitor's office, and there's reason to keep that language in because there are circumstances when a town manager would be in compliance with the flag code in lowering flags to half staff. And so at those times when it is in compliance with the code, he would be able to do so. When it's not in compliance with the code, he would not be able to do so unless we chose to violate the code.
Um Jacob, do you know what the what those circumstances would be by any chance?
So if a firefighter, for example, were to um unfortunately die in the line of duty, for example, that's a standard custom when a flag could be lowered by a governor. And if it's a standard custom when an executive would lower it, a town manager would be able to lower it. Um and that's in line with um something President Carroll had said when we had the open hearing, when we had the public hearing on it, was a reason to ensure that um the town manager has the authority to raise a flag. Could be if, you know, something happened and and, you know, a firefighter passed and we wanted to act quickly and couldn't have a council meeting. Um but I was thinking the appropriate thing in that instance is is to put the flags at half staff, not to raise something different. And so that's why I I looked to put that in there. Um but the the other part is actually something that Vice President Hum addressed, and it's the strong value of public comment when we're going to be dealing with flags because we see how um passionate and charged of a topic it is. If the, I I want the ordinance to ensure that there is always opportunity for public input before anything else goes up on the flagpole. And so that's what this amendment accomplishes.
Counselor, uh excuse me, Vice President Hum, please.
Yeah, thank you. And Jacob, thanks for acknowledging that. Um I actually disagree a bit here with respect to this particular ordinance. And I think the reason is the suddenness in which it's coming before us. We passed an ordinance less than a month ago, literally. And it it might have had one of the more robust and comprehensive processes this town has ever had in terms of its public engagement to even pass the ordinance. And the amount of feedback we got into the ordinance before we passed it. And this is what came out of that meeting. And now we're essentially less than a month later, and there's a pretty significant substantive change. It it hasn't really had an opportunity to play out. It's played out over the last few weeks, and certainly we've gotten a lot of emails since then, and we had some discussions tonight. I I think what I what I'd suggest is not move forward with this now, but let's see how it plays out. And we can revisit it four months, six months down the road, a year down the road, when we actually know what some of the kinks are with respect to this ordinance. But I I think we need to give it a chance before we start making what I view as almost a wholesale change.
That's, I understand that. Part of the reason for this is because of a a late change, you know, made around midnight after the public hearing. Initially, as drafted, the council, if a flag was going to be raised, we'd be notified. And if we thought it was something that needed public comment, we would be able to intervene, and it wouldn't be raised without public comment. That was removed with a late edit, and it's something I I didn't fully acknowledge at the time.
Any other member of the council want to be heard on this? Uh, so I would, yes, Counsel Castell, please.
I, I, I tend to acknowledge that the, the flag policy isn't perfect, and I can see the deficiency that Counsel Brier. I also think we should probably let things play a bit and see how we function under this policy. I, I, I certainly trust the town manager to be responsible in, in, in operations. That's why he's there. And, and I think we can, we can address, we may, we may address this, but I don't know that we need to address it immediately, especially given that we are evaluating how the policy functions as a whole for a while. And maybe it is best to address it in a either comprehensive fashion or with regard to this specific issue after some time.
Okay. Um, anyone else? Okay, so, um, Counsel Brier, did you want to make the motion?
President Carroll, we have one member of the public that liked this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Paul, Paul Lucchinos, please.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me? Yeah, I kind of, I held my comments for this portion because we were talking about potentially mending this ordinance. So, um, you know, we're one month into this, and, and what's missing from this overall story, we had a very nice discussion about the autism flag, but was, what's missing from the story is the flags that were denied even sponsorship going forward. Uh, and there's more in the pipeline. Since, since this ordinance been passed, there's a half a dozen different flag applications that have come through, and some of them are pretty, pretty noble or, or value centered, like an anti-Semitism flag, uh, to stop anti-Semitism, uh, veterans' suicide awareness flag that are in the works now. And I guess the concern is the, the ambiguity of the policy itself, the ordinance. Uh, you know, there's an old saying that if the town council didn't have a double standard, there'd be no standard at all as far as it. It seems a little bit arbitrary and capricious how we come about which flags get to fly and which don't get to fly. And we're using the cover of the term government free speech as, as the tool from which to restrict other speech. And, and I feel like the town council, you're elected by the citizens, and you are our voice, all of our voice, not just the privileged few. And in the current process that we're following right now, we're choosing, there are winners and losers. Some folks are being deplatformed and canceled, particularly conservative voices. So I think it's kind of time that we, we stop this. Either we endorse all flags or we, or we restrict all of them. And I believe that's the proper way to go. And if you want to amend this ordinance, we should go back to our original proposal from six months ago when we suggested that only the US flag would fly with the state flag, the town flag, and the POW flag. And it was interesting in telling what earlier comment that Counselor Brier made, it was almost like he said separate equal when he talked about, we can use blue lights to light up the town hall. So that, that's not the same. That's separate but equal. So are we giving equal footing, equal speech to all causes or only to a select few? And now I've said my piece. Thank you.
I'll just respond to that if I may. Um, it's, it's not about separate but equal. It's different. And looking for equal outcomes for everything is not the right approach. Looking for suitable means to do something is the right approach. And I felt, um, because it was the national organization's push, that it was more appropriate to light up town hall. But that's not, it's not separate but equal. It's different. But no, I'm not, I'm not gonna make a motion to introduce this now. I agree with, um, letting it play out. And I think, um, from the discussion tonight, it's clear, um, that there should be public comment before any flag goes up, and I'm sure that we'll, we'll have that be the case.
Okay. Thank you. Then the next item on our agenda is, um, a public hearing. Um, and I am opening the public hearing into section, uh, to twenty twenty-one dash four renewal of ordinance of declaration of emergency, uh, until April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Um, does anyone on the council want to say anything? I, I can kind of highlight, um, Jeff Grove's comments, I think. If I can find them. I can't find them, but I will, I will as best I can. And I think Jeff's position is that we no longer need a, and I, I'm gonna do the best I can. Uh, we no longer need a state of emergency. We're not in dire circum, not in, he wanted to point out that we're not in increasingly dire circumstances. Um, and, um, so we no longer need this state of emergency. Um, he also pointed out that the purpose for a state of emergency was to be lacked nimbly if things change quickly. Uh, and, and with that, I agree. Um, I just disagree that we're not in a state of emergency. I mean, he, he raised this before, and I, I quoted, uh, Ruth Bader Ginsburg, who said, uh, you know, um, doing this, getting rid of this would be like throwing weight or umbrella in a rainstorm because you're not getting wet. Um, I, I think that things are getting more dire, i- not in the sense that they're worse than, that they're coming to their worst point. I just think that we've got over half a million Americans dead, and this is bad. And it's still not, we're, we're not out of the woods yet. I have to tell you, when I drive around and I see parking lots full of restaurants, I have to think we're in for a surge. Um, maybe two weeks out. I hope I'm wrong, but I just think people are getting tired of it, and they want to get it over with. And we're not there yet. We have to kind of hold on for a little bit, little bit longer, uh, before we're ready to resume normal, if there ever is a, a new normal. Um, anyone on the council want to be heard on this? Yes, Counsel Brier.
Um, so actually, I, I have a suggested amendment based on what he sent, um, what, what, what he said and suggested, and that's just to change, um, related to the COVID-19 pandemic and circumstances remain dire, both locally. Um, I, I think that is more accurate. I don't think it is more dire now than it was a couple of months ago, but it's still dire. And, um, the idea that we, we could accomplish all of the measures that the town manager has taken through the manager's executive orders, we could accomplish all those. But let's say a mask mandate is no longer needed. Well, then we have to introduce it to repeal it, and then we have to wait a month, and then we have to vote to repeal it. I think passing most of these through legislation would, would be slow on the other end of it. And I don't think any of us want the restrictions any longer than, than public health is gonna dictate. Um, I also, if Jim can speak to the funding that's available because we remain in a state of emergency, I think we've, we've spoken about it before, but I think that really emphasizes, um, some of the logistical.
The, uh, right now, the state has received, uh, besides the funding from FEMA, FEMA has, for vaccinations specifically, they've provided or will provide a total of a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars to the state of Rhode Island to cover all costs of vaccinations. Rental of equipment, uh, facilities over time, which is probably our most significant need. And we're looking at two, you know, part of this regional, uh, pod, it's gonna take, uh, two days a week, six hundred vaccines a day. If they get to that point, it's gonna take an awful lot of manpower. And that's why I like the bigger regional pod where there's more capacity out of the bigger municipalities. But they have sixty-five million dollars, um, in hand that, um, they, they can give us as we need it. So, um, you know, that, that, that's extremely important that we have, that we're nimble and agile enough to adjust as necessary to these things. And I would call vac, vaccination's the most important piece of this puzzle right now.
Uh, so, um, Counsel Brier is proposing a change to the first sentence of the second paragraph after the comma, uh, so that it would, instead of saying, and circumstances have become more dire, it would say, and circumstances remain dire. Have I said that correctly? Okay. Uh, yes, Lisa Lowensteve would like to be heard. Lisa Lowensteve. I think you can unmute yourself.
Am I muted?
Yes, I can hear you now. Please go ahead.
Um, just to go back to something that was said previously by you, President Carroll, um, people have COVID fatigue, and the data shows that it's very much associated with the fact that we're turning the corner on the calendar twelve months of how long this has gone on. And people have been looking forward for this to end and planning birthdays and travel, and they've been very much looking at the annual cadence. The fact that a letter like this could be written by someone saying that we're not in a state of emergency is exactly indicative of what is wrong. It means that people are losing the focus on how dangerous this is. So as someone who has studied this problem for the last twelve months, I've been on WGBH, I've been interviewed, I've been working with this mass nonprofit that I created and watching what's happened. I worked with the Central Falls Housing Authority last week. The problem is not going away, and we need as a community to make sure that people understand that it is worse than ever because everyone is so sick of it. They're sick of the energy that it takes to defend our community. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Paul Lucchinos, please.
Yeah, I think, um, well, first thing I wanna, I, I just wanna, um, be happy to hear that, uh, I'm happy to hear that Counselor Brier is against equal outcomes. So that, that's, that's a positive thing and a step in the right direction. We're looking for equality, equal opportunities, not equal outcomes. So that's a good thing. But, um, I think some of the concerns with this, um, with the renewal of the declaration of emergency that was brought up is that we are more restrictive possibly than, than, than the state or, or even federal restrictions. So I think we need to make sure that we're not over-restricted, over-bearing and, and, and restricting our population more so than necessary. We definitely have turned the corner. Um, we're at a point where we're well on our way to herd immunity. Uh, the statistics show that and the rapid decrease in the amount of infections. Um, the vaccination, we just had our third vaccine approved now. Uh, the fifty million people have been vaccinated in our country. Um, so I think, uh, we need to actually start looking at the light at the end of the tunnel. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, I do, I agree that there is a light at the end of the tunnel. I don't think it's as close as you, you, you might think. I, all of these hopeful signs, a new vaccine, uh, being posted, I, I just think we, we, we've sort of leveled off in the reduction of cases. Um, but we're not there yet. And, and I, I don't want us to let our guard down. I just, I get, every time I go by, uh, there's a couple of places that just restaurants seem packed. Uh, and I get it. It's, I would love to go out for a meal. Wouldn't we all love to just get together and, uh, not have to worry about this? We just need to hold on a little longer, I think. Um, Vice President Humm, please.
Yeah, and I, I agree. And, um, I think the, the work that Mr. Cunha and his staff and, and the rest of the town have done, I think, has been exceptional. And I've seen, you know, people say, well, Barrington's numbers are low. I think that's because they've done a really good job of, of controlling that as best they can for an unpredictable, um, unprecedented, um, pandemic. So, uh, I'm fully in favor of continuing this. Um, with respect to Mr. Brier's amendment, um, personally, I'm fine with the language either way. I think the amendment makes sense. Um, statistically, scientifically, I don't know if we're more dire. It depends on how you look at it. Um, but certainly we remain dire. So, um, if, if that's what people support, I support that change.
Uh, Counsel Castell, please. Muted, sir.
I would echo Counsel Brier and Vice President Humm and President Carroll's, uh, comments. The purpose of a state of emergency, as I see it, is to allow speed and flexibility to adapt to either threats like the variants that we may have seen leveling off before and that stuff, or opportunities, which would be the new vaccines and, and increased distribution. Uh, we are not out of the woods, according to any medical experts I've seen, and therefore let's stay the course, continue the progress, and hope there isn't another way.
Would anyone else from the public like to be heard? I should say anyone from the public like to be heard. You can, you can speak more than once in a public hearing. Okay, uh, Giovanni Chacon, Mr. Chacon, please.
Thank you. Um, I, I just wanna, you know, I, I don't disagree with a lot of what you just said there. I, I do appreciate, uh, Mr. Grove's comment, though, and I think part of the consideration for the council here has to be, um, the fatigue of, of, of this whole thing, right? The reason you see restaurants full is because people won't follow, um, you know, the same guidance that you would follow. And people have a differing view of whether we're in the heat of an emergency or not. Um, I can tell you, I was in, uh, Miami this weekend, and there were clubs with six hundred people out, you know, shoulder to shoulder, having a great time without masks. Um, you know, there are different levels of tolerance for this, and I think you have to acknowledge that, not because one side's right or one side's wrong, but because, um, because if you, if you call something an emergency for a year, you, you lessen the trust in our town government because that just doesn't make sort of grammatical sense, right? An emergency is an emergency, and a year is not an emergency period. And I think what Mr. Grove was getting at is that if there are ways to do all the same things that this, um, this, you know, now twelve-month, uh, emergency, uh, order allows you to do, um, you might be better off, uh, in, in sort of lowering the, the tone so that people do see the light at the end of the tunnel, and they don't think that it's just, um, you know, a constant, uh, uh, state of, um, you know, panic. Uh, and, and it's, you know, the, the, if you look at the state emergency statute, it's about giving, uh, the governor authority in a thirty-day period, right? That's the, the timeframe that's built in that statute. Our town ordinance doesn't have that. It's open-ended, so you have much more flexibility. But I think you should think about the reason that we have that in the state statute. It's because an emergency is something that, that gives the governor authority to do something when the legislature couldn't possibly meet in time to, to, to be nimble, right? I don't think that's the case of, of, you know, with, with regard to the items that are in this, um, emergency ordinance. I think you could structure it so that Mr. Cunha has all the authority he needs to respond to variants or vaccine demands or whatever it is, um, but not do that through a, you know, sort of ongoing, never-ending emergency order. And I think that's, that's, when I saw Mr. Grove's comments, I think that was really what I read out of them. It's not so much that we're gonna have a debate about who's the better, you know, epidemiologist here. Um, it's, it's about the, the way that this looks to much of the populace, not all the populace, but to much of the populace. And I think that that's a, a health concern you have to address as much as the nuts and bolts of getting vaccines. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Lisa Lowensteve would like to be heard. Please.
Um, I think that the, thank you for letting me speak a second time. I think that we are, we're splitting some hairs where we don't need to, and we're missing the point. Lives have actually been saved because, um, this town was better equipped than the federal government to make decisions. And some of those decisions were, in some cases, difficult to make because the town council could not meet and overnight because of the rules and make decisions. And it is a belabored process sometimes to make decisions through the council. I've experienced it, and the council members have as well. And I think that the idea of a set period of time, a year in, in humankind, is a short period of time. If we look at the fact that we've all forgotten our history lessons and forgotten about the Spanish pandemic, by the time this came, I, I spoke to my mother, who's an oxygenarian, and I said to her in February, we're gonna have a shutdown. It's gonna be for months. I'm buying a third refrigerator, stocking it filled, and I don't care what your friends are doing. You're not leaving the house. I'm buying a third refrigerator, stocking it filled, and I don't care what your friends are doing. You're not leaving the house." And I practically had to tire up. And that was from one minute to the next because I saw it was going on. One year seems like a long time because we're impatient. But history shows us that we had plagues in Europe that lasted decades. This is an emergency situation, and it changes from one day to the next. And to give Mr. Cunha the trust and the power to be able to shut the door in town hall or make everyone wear a mask and just say you have to wear it out when you're jogging as well can save lives. And the fact that people don't understand that is because we're pretty spoiled and entitled. So I applaud everyone for engaging and coming to town council and talking about it. But we need history lessons. Because if we don't know our history, we're doomed to repeat it, and that's what we're living right now. So I commend the efforts that the town council makes to give up their own power and to trust Mr. Cunha so that we can continue to have the kind of knee-jerk, in good sense, reactions that we need when we need them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Counselor Castell, please.
I think that was, that was really well said. And I would also say that, that is not to say that, and I can't speak for anyone else, but I think it's fair to say that we're not saying that this council or Mr. Cunha or anyone else is diminishing our, just a couple of these restrictions. Nor do we think, I don't believe, at least that we can ignore the fact that our businesses have, our small businesses and local businesses have really complied extremely well and been instrumental in helping this work, as well as our schools. And that we can do. We should not, we should not fail to acknowledge that we're still in a state of emergency. And we can still also acknowledge the hardship that people and businesses have felt so that we, when we come out of it, take maybe extra action to make sure that they're okay and we can move forward as a community. We shouldn't be insensitive to that. At the same time, we have to acknowledge that we're still in it. And the word emergency to some may suggest short term. What it really means is it's immediate and a threat you have to deal with. And what we're facing now nationwide are really the level of casualties that you see from a war. It's going on for quite some time.
Yeah, I'm not, I agree with that. And I'd point out that in the 1918 pandemic, it wasn't until year two that people really started to die. I don't think that's the case with us. I do think we have the light at the end of the tunnel. But we are not out of the tunnel yet, so we've got to, we've got to stay the course for a little while longer. TR would like to be heard. Please.
Right, Chris, we in line with the state as to state policy and limitations on people and all that other stuff, or are we still below that?
When you say below, do you mean, are we more restrictive? Is that your question?
Right, so the state mandate that you can have two families at a dinner table and all that other stuff and up to 25 people, if I'm not mistaken, now, are we still at 10? Or are we in line with the state mandates at this time?
The state overrides us all the time in those cases. So I need to redo, right, TR, I need to redo this to adjust to the, yeah, we get changes every week, and I try and group them together. But you're correct. I mean, there's some changes, some loosening in the sports activities. And, no, I, well, I'm looking here. No, I have corrected it. The latest 2021 TACTT2 does talk about two households, no, it says two households outdoors. It's now three outdoors. So that needs to be changed. So I will get, I will get a new update out later this week.
So state does supersede local, correct?
Well, not, not, I mean, if anything that the state does that is more restrictive, we've got to comply with. We have the ability to impose additional restrictions. So for example, for about six hours, we were the only community in the state to require a mask mandate. I think the governor put it in shortly. It might have been 24 hours. I don't know, but it wasn't long. We had our, we were the first ones with the mask mandate, and then the governor put that in as well. Circumstances can be different. And we may, we may view the need to act quickly if a variant comes in. Jim may need to say, "We've got to close the town hall again." He may need to say, "We're going to hold off because we've got a big spike in Barrington." So we just need to be nimble on these things.
Okay. But you guys are saying that we're still in a deep pandemic and all that other good stuff, and we're, you think we're going to have a spike. Well, I feel hospitals are closing down, if I'm not mistaken. Cranston's closing down Friday. And the Government Center or Dunkin' Donuts Center is closing down, and they're changing that into a massive vaccine center now. So I think we are on the downside. If not, if we weren't, I don't think they would be closing these and changing them into a vaccine center. I know Cranston, they're not planning on doing anything except closing it down. So I think we are seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. And I think Jeff was wondering if we could lighten up a little bit and open things more like town hall, maybe go in person without an appointment.
Town hall is open.
Town hall is now open.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to adjust. I just think we have to be very cautious at this point. And I hope that I'm wrong in worrying about all those restaurants I see full, leading to, I'm also worried about a St. Patrick's Day, two weeks later spike because people just can't want to get together and celebrate. But we'll have to see.
I think that the two real variables here are the variants and the vaccine supply. And I think both of those things are still, there's promises, promises with the vaccines, but we haven't seen it yet. And the variants, you know, they think they've got them figured out, but they keep, they keep changing. And so there's a concern there that how effective the vaccines will be with those variants.
Yeah. TR, I don't know if you have your hand up again or if it was still up.
I left it up.
Okay. Anyone else from the public or anyone from the public? Okay, seeing no one else, I am closing the public hearing. We can still talk, TR's got his hand up again. I will, we'll give him another chance.
Sorry about that. This is public hearing, part of public comment to go back onto stuff that was already presented.
No, this is public hearing just on this ordinance.
Well, there is one more public comment coming up, correct?
No. Sorry. That was earlier in the meeting.
Yeah, well, you cut me off because I wanted to say something on the town, on the financial town meeting. But that's all right. We'll bring it up next month.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to adopt 2021-4, renewal of the declaration of emergency as presented and amended to change it from increasingly dire to continues to be dire.
Seconded?
Seconded by Counselor Breyer. Any further discussion? Okay, Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That motion carries. Oh, just, just real briefly, I wanted to, the Open Meetings Act is, this is the next item on the agenda, is just to discuss the Open Meetings Act. Not an act, but just to discuss. This is, the Open Meetings Act can be very frustrating because you feel like you could get so much done if you just pick up a phone. But, you know, we're, we've been very good about this. There was a time when Barrington got fined a bit about it. And we tried very hard to comply with it. I just want to propose a kind of etiquette. That is, before we broach a subject with another member of the council, we should just say, "Hey, I'd like to talk to you about this. Is that something we can talk about?" And, and the reason I say that is, is just because Counselor Castell and I wanted to work on something. It just turned out that he'd already spoken or someone had already spoken with him about some ideas on that subject. So we're not able to work on that. I think we probably should just say, "I'd like to work with you on an initiative. This is the initiative." And otherwise, it becomes difficult to, you sort of, you can, you can lock someone in from being able to work on it with somebody else. That's just my suggestion because I don't want to run into that again. So that was all I had on it, unless anyone has anything else on it.
If it were a motion, I'd second it. And I think Mike Rosillo would rather not have my phone calls and emails. And so, you know, if we could, we could.
Not true, not true.
Okay. So now to set the agenda for the Monday, April 5 meeting at 7:00 PM to be held via Zoom. In addition to renewing, the state of emergency will expire, not on that date, but we'll have to address it on that date. We will not have a, an ordinance public hearing other than that because Counselor Breyer's signed ordinance has been referred to the planning board. We do have a meeting on the 22nd, which is the budget. We'll also address at that meeting the issue of this request for proposal relating to a hybrid meeting. Anything else anyone wants to put on the agenda now? Carl, please.
Wouldn't be on the agenda, just in terms of planning. I believe Counselor Breyer and I are going to be working with the LGBTQ plus community on the pride ceremony for June. That would probably be on the, on the agenda, if we can get on the agenda in May. And so if there's anything you're looking at for May, maybe you want to move it to April. And we would encourage public involvement, too, people who would like to support, to support that, that cause as well.
Sure. Sure, yeah, I guess, so it's June, so we could do it April and May, so that's fine, either one is fine. Anything else? Yes. Rob, please.
Yeah, the Parks and Rec Commission voted unanimously to approve a memorial bench for a person named Ryan Poland, who grew up in town and spent a lot of time in town and recently passed away. Parks and Rec apparently, or the town, has guidelines for public memorials. So in the Parks and Rec's review of this, they made sure that it followed the guidelines. And the next step is to forward it to the town council to put it on their next meeting. So that's where they're at, and they've asked that we put it on the April agenda.
Okay, Mary, can we make sure that one gets on the April agenda? Counselor Breyer?
I'd like to present a resolution next month on antisemitism. There's not going to be a flag associated at all with the resolution. It'll just be other things. And probably not anything ready for next month's agenda, but possibly Counselor Castell and I have started talking about some composting ideas. So I don't know if that'll come up by next month, but possibly either next month or the following.
Which one of you, I'm sorry, which one of you is Conservation Commission liaison? That's you, Carl, okay. Because I know that they were working on that, so, yeah.
Yeah, involving them as part of that plan.
Okay, Carl?
The planning board wants to do a workshop with us, and they said they've requested that for some time. I don't know when that works into our schedule. They want to discuss our objectives for the, in terms of development in town and sort of get, get our priorities. And so I'm not proposing that, obviously, for the agenda, but I want to make the council as a whole aware of that request. I'm supportive of it. They're looking for some direction and guidance. When that fits into our schedule, I would leave that open to everyone on this, on this Zoom call.
Yeah, so, so that's probably going to be very much impacted by the, it's late, I'm forgetting, comprehensive community plan. And I know that that's also coming up for renewal. But that lays out some of our priorities. And I think we could try to schedule something in April. We've got another one in March coming up. So in April, we could schedule something just to, to sort of workshop and brainstorm some, some things on that. That, hopefully, that would give, also give Phil and his team enough time to, to look at it because they, you know, the planners are heavily involved in, in future priorities, so.
Yeah, I agree. We want to go about scheduling it. I think that's about the fastest they could do it. You know, they wouldn't be ready to meet tomorrow. They want to have one meeting before they, before they do that with us. But that is, that is an ongoing request, and I think that we should certainly agree to it.
Okay. Counselor Breyer?
On, on the agenda for next month is the manager's review.
Yes.
I know the solicitor sent out the request about having the 360 portion sent to all members of the council, and I just wanted to check, make sure that's, that's happening.
So my, the council will see the 360 portion, of course.
Prior to our review?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's going to be anonymized, so they'll see, you'll see all of the comments. Just as when we put together all of the counselors, in the past, we've always anonymized them and just put all the comments together and all the ratings together so that you could see those. But that's, that's my intention, certainly, to get those to you before so that you can, you can take a look at the 360 reviews.
So the reviews themselves are not going to go to the solicitor and then sent to all of us? We're going to get your summary? Is that correct?
No, you're going to get the, it's not a summary, it's complete. It's just going to be anonymized.
Okay.
Mike, can I ask if I can review all of those before I put my budget in for raises?
Yeah, you should have told them that first. It would have been a very different 360 review. Okay, of course, at any point during the month, anybody comes up with something they want to put on the agenda, please let me know, and we'll, we'll get that on there. So unless there's anything else, I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn. Does anyone have such a motion?
Moved.
Motion by Counselor Castell. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway? And Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That motion carries. Thank you all. And have a good night. We'll see you later this month.
It's an early one compared to last week.
We'll get earlier.
Thanks.